Good evening and welcome to the November 28, 2016 work session of the Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have four items on our agenda, and the first one is our annual briefing from the Transportation Committee. With us, we have our staff liaison, Ollie Mumpower, we have Joe Allen, our committee chair, and we have Jerry Stringham, our committee member, and I will let you guys take it away.
Thank you very much. Theme for tonight is becoming a bicycle-friendly city. It's also been the major theme of the committee over the past year. Our topics to be covered include the key committee objective of becoming a bicycle-friendly city, progress towards that objective, status of what we call the Gaithersburg Network, also an update on the Capital Bike Share and integration with that. Then, we'd like to go through the committee requests of the council, and then, of course, answer any of your questions. In addition to myself and Joe here, we also have Carol here as well, from the committee, and Larry, and Richard intended to join us tonight, but he did not make it, and we'd also like to acknowledge the effective work by our council liaison, Neil Harris, and attendance by Robert Wu to many of our meetings.
We thank you all for your service to the community, very much.
The committee history, we were reformed in 2011. A key focus, particularly over the last couple of years, has been to improve the suitability of biking in and around Gaithersburg, where the existing accommodations are frankly substantially deficient when compared to towns like Rockville, but there remains a strong interest in biking as a mode of transportation in the city. So, we evaluated the requirements for National Bike Friendly Designation in 2015, and that served as a catalyst for the work that we're going to be presenting today. In the past, from 2014 to 2016, there's a number of activities highlighted there, summarized. These are planning activities, by and large, and our goal here is to encourage movement toward the next steps in going from planning to action. The key committee objective, becoming a bike-friendly city, is somewhat spurred on by the Montgomery County Bicycle Master Plan Framework document, which summarized a survey that was done. And 63% of the residents are interested in biking, 37% said no way, no how, but the biggest chunk of those, 51%, are interested but concerned, less than very comfortable or non-residential street with or without bike lanes. So, more or less saying that the bike facilities aren't adequate, and I would certainly put myself in that category as well. What has our progress been toward achieving BFC, or Bicycle Friendly City Designation? We have the 2009 Bike Master Plan Implementation, and then some additional concept planning efforts which kicked into higher gear this year. Some are ours, but some are county or external that we've monitored, and certainly a big part of us becoming a BFC, there's things that will help that are being done outside, and I'll go through some of those. As a background, the Bicycle Master Plan Implementation Strategy was presented to the Mayor and City Council in 2013, included implementation of the sharrows. That was done in 2015, and then a number of other planning efforts. Part of that is improving access by bicycle to transit, and one of those things that came out of that is the idea of trails right alongside the train, the existing train. The Bike Friendly City Designation is bolstered by current efforts to incorporate bicycle transports at the Life Science Center. So, that's kind of right on our border, but you can see on this map, the proposed separated bike lane and parking network which would hook up to the City of Gaithersburg bicycle network. And another major planning effort was the Pepco Exelon Trail. This goes from Montgomery Mall up to the Germantown Socko Plex and would hook up to the network in Lakelands and Kettlands. So, I will turn this over to Joe, but at this point, and discuss really the specific things that we want to do now for, to achieve bicycle-friendly status. Go ahead, Joe.
So, as you can see, there's been a lot of planning efforts over the past couple of years, a lot of concepts, and what we want to do is talk to you now about some particular actions that might help us move to the next step, including completing the NIST 124 Loop, connecting with the Montgomery County Planning Efforts, and completing a bicycle network as we talked about last year with the gap study that we've undertaken. So, this past year, we've mapped the current routes of interest, activity centers, identified existing fragments that are suitable for neighborhood riding, but new connections that are needed to connect those different fragments. And funding was allocated, and we thank you for that over the past year, to looking at a gap study. The initial feasibility planning has been conducted by Ollie, and the next step is really to look at design and a potential pilot. When the connections are done, it would support a low-stress bicycle network, as Jerry said, for those 51% that would really like to use the network, but right now are kind of limited to small loops within their neighborhood. It would blend recreational trails with a high-quality on-road bicycle facility, and the county has designated this type of concept as a breezeway network, a really efficient way to blend different types of facilities, but that are high-grade and low-stress, and so, we're proposing that as kind of the concept behind the network here. We think a pilot first on a couple of streets to help us understand how to design and plan them would be most prudent, followed by studying the design for the links between those neighborhood loops, and then finally completing the connectivity. We showed you this last year, but we'll go a little bit more in-depth, and I'll start by just showing the maps and then breaking it down into the specific requests for you to give guidance back to staff to help us move forward with the planning funds that you've already allocated. So, this is the current status, these are the neighborhood trails that we already have. As you can see, they're quite disconnected, and then on the bottom, you do see the pink, which is the Rockville Network, which is the nice loop that they have. The pilot phase that we're recommending is a small set of a couple of streets that would allow us to get experience with how these work on the street, how folks would use them. It wouldn't actually be the full network, they'd be more engineering tests and determining how best to have them interact, so when we get to the larger network, we're doing them right for our context in our city. The next would actually start to really connect those smaller pieces into interneighborhood loops that would allow us to connect together, and then finally bringing those loops together with a full network connectivity, both to the county system and to other transportation networks, as recommended in a lot of the concept studies. And then, of course, Capital Bike Share, we've talked about that in the past. Council's looked at it, once the network is complete, having some form of Capital Bike Share from the existing county facilities makes a lot of sense, and the county actually has put these forward even as they were planning their network, to try to encourage and help to facilitate understanding of how to use the network and get the most advantage, especially from transit. So, since so much funding has been spent on concepts, we'd really like to ask some specific guidance on physical and policy issues, I'll go into those. The first one is a pilot phase, to actually go to construction. It's a low-dollar figure, suggestions for a couple places to really test out the idea of a protected bike lane. They are small connections, one on School Drive and one on West Side Drive. Many cities have used pilot on-street demonstrations where it's kind of a quick, a public engagement process where you come out, talk about them, and then commit to only putting them on the street for a year or so to see how they actually work, and it helps people to both understand how they might work, both as a bicyclist and someone who might be in automobile or walking. And then, some pilots around the actual construction of a protected bike lane, as we've talked about previously, on Quince Orchard Boulevard, that's a larger segment with a lot more traffic, and so we think the earlier pilots, perhaps even using funds that were allocated for the concept and planning, might be feasible in the next year, and then following the following year with the Quince Orchard Boulevard. So, that would get us these small blue segments over on this side down, and then from Malcolm King over here. The second would be, use the design funds that were allocated this year and next year to really complete the design. These are a little bit more complex, and Ollie needs some assistance from other experts to help us move forward these concepts from just initial feasibility to what it would actually take to get them done, and so, using the funds this year and next year to complete the study of those to about 30% to look at the potential design. This, again, would get us to the connections between neighborhoods. And then the final is to actually apply to the state for some grant funding, to look at even more complex connections that are a little bit longer, potentially higher costs, or have environmental issues, as well as to partner with the state on construction for the 124 shared-use path. Again, that would get us the larger network and connections to the rest of the county. As I mentioned, the NIST path construction and then extending Capital Bike Share, really looking at what would be the next steps to do that, especially using existing county funds for transportation mitigation. Although this is at the end, we really do want the council's feedback on this concept as a breezeway network. It's probably the most essential piece in the design and planning for the next phase, both in the pilots and all the other projects that we've put forward, is the idea, since the master plan only called for sharrows and a few bike lanes since 2007, when that study was undertaken, protective bike lanes and this concept of trails, kind of a low-stress network has really become the standard in design, and we want to hear back from council on whether or not this is the direction that we'd like to take, especially with our early pilots. And that would include using the city's pavement management program to look at ways to integrate that as they repave roads. The second request is to really look at interim access for folks. Right now, the city is one of the only local jurisdictions that prohibits sidewalk riding by adults, even with children, and this has become a question, especially since we have a lot of shared-use paths that look like sidewalks, that there's a lot of confusion out there. Pedestrians, of course, would always have the right of way, it's more of a clarification, it's been used in other cities, and I think we've done well here with not harassing folks, but it can be used as a kind of harassment mechanism, too. We want to just discourage any confusion about use of sidewalk riding by anybody, whether it's transportation or to help kids go to school. I know when I'm riding with my kids, I don't want to be on the street while they're on the sidewalk about to cross a road and telling them, "Stop, wait." So, we need some clarification on that.
And I'll turn it over to Jerry, just to summarize.
So, in summary, the Transportation Committee is pleased to provide input to the Mayor and City Council's objective of becoming a bike-friendly city, BFC. While there are a number of actions that must be taken before we're eligible to achieve this designation, Gaithersburg is well on its way. Our focus has been on the actual bikeways when we went through the survey process, and this is the step that is needed first and foremost to become a BFC. The most important actions in the near term require direct Mayor and City Council input are to complete the NIST 124 Loop, that's the loop around NIST that has been actively discussed since I joined the committee in 2011. But then, convert the current network into the Gaithersburg breezeway. So, we hope the Mayor and City Council will provide the necessary fiscal and policy guidance needed for Gaithersburg to be designated a BFC, and we think it'll be important and make the city a better place to live. So, at this point, we'll open up to your questions, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you.
All right, thank you very much for the presentation. You guys got through a lot of stuff quicker than I anticipated, but very effectively. Let me, I have a couple of questions, and they're probably, I want to hear from staff specifically on a couple of the items that the committee is recommending. Perhaps, the idea of a breezeway network is something that's really in concert with where we are. I don't, I haven't, I'm not familiar with that phrase, with that term, so my question to staff is, what are the impacts and policy considerations of adopting this idea of a breezeway network?
Well, I think one of, and we had a meeting a month ago, I guess, with Dennis, and we talked about these issues, and it really becomes the idea of the level that you want to incorporate bicycling into the mobility of the city. The committee is asking you to look at that at a high level, to make it a method of transportation, much like they do in complete streets. This would be one of the first things that you would consider when you look at road sections. An example that I used for the committee a number of times is one of the, one of the locations we've talked about is Kettland's Boulevard, and depending on the recommendation from the Mayor and Council, we could be looking at adding sharrows like we have on other streets, and that's the lowest level, or we could be looking at a cycle track on that. And, once we get to the 30% design, staff really needs some direction on, at what level do you want us to try to approach these? One level that you could do is Montgomery County has looked at, and we talked about it in this report, is looking at low-stress networks. So, you could set a goal of, when we look at these streets, is that we try to do everything we can to make them low-stress, and that would provide us some guidance. And then, Montgomery County has some guidelines they use, depending on the amount of traffic, depending on the speeds of the roads, and depending on several other things, they have recommendations on what type of bicycle facility they'd like to use. For Kettland's Boulevard, you could put a cycle track on one side of the street, on both sides of the street. It sounds a little strange, but you have the possibility of putting it down the center of the median. If you put it on either side of the street, it could have impacts. You're either taking parking off of the street, that has an impact, or taking a lane of traffic off the street, that has an impact. So, for some places, like Kettland's Boulevard, you have to consider it all together and see what the best choice is. For a place like Quince Orchard Boulevard, for School Drive, the ones that we've talked about, those are ones where, just because of the width of the street, we can repurpose it and really fit everything that's in there, plus a cycle track, and keep it the same. The other ones are going to be more challenging. So, staff needs some direction to get to the 30% level on what sort of design you would like us to move forward with.
But, just, it helped me settle this idea of the term breezeway network. If we just put sharrows down, if we decide to go with the most low-impact ways of facilitating, and I, and by the way, I consider myself among that 51%, interested but concerned. If we were to go with the lower impact, does that qualify us to call it a breezeway network by the definition?
No, I would say no, because what happens is, if you're, for many of the streets in the city, the sharrows give you, you have the right to ride on those streets anyway, the sharrows provides, I would call it like the first level of additional education to let people know that, but I don't think you're going to feel safer on a street, much safer on a street with sharrows than you would on a street without one. If you put a cycle track in, obviously, that's probably the safest you're going to feel. If you have the ability to do off-road pathways, you're separated from the traffic, and you might feel comfortable with that. But merely marking the streets as to educate people, their bicycle lanes, I think, do very little to help you with the stress.
So, it would have to be a more intensive set of policies and capital projects to get us to the level where we would call it a real breezeway network. So, I would, I'd go even further. The 51% category was interested but concerned, I'm very interested but concerned. But, but, there's another, I mean, there's another element that certainly, that separates us in the urban density that we have and the constraints that we have with our roads from places like Rockville and Bethesda, and there's, and I think, primary, there's a bunch of reasons, but there's a bunch of things that separate us, but primaries that is access to metro. And, while I think Mark is, you know, I'm glad we have Mark, I certainly wish it was going both directions and was more effective as a transit option at more times of the day for more people. We have to balance a lot of things up here. We have limited resources, and I happen to agree that, I think that there's some more potential for bicycle use in the city, but at the same time, when we have to make a decision between parking on Kettland's Boulevard or taking away a lane away, that those are serious considerations about moving people in what is a high-density area of the city. So, you know, I don't know if I'm ready to jump on the, we definitely need a breezeway network, or that needs to be sort of a short-term goal, but I absolutely agree that we should take steps to address the 51% and make it more palatable, safer, desirable for bikers to use roads in Gaithersburg. I know, I was recently considering, I recently got a bike, I haven't had a bike in 25 years, and I was thinking about, how am I, I want to sort of go around Great Seneca and around Kettland's up to Route 28 and come back to my neighborhood, and I was thinking, how am I going to get up there? I don't want to ride right on Quince Orchard Road, and so, I didn't. I ended up using the wide, which I think is legal, the wide sidewalk along Great Seneca Highway, to do it. So, I, you know, I'm starting to get more of a firsthand understanding for what you guys have been talking about, and I think these are legitimate things, but we have a lot to balance here, and so, I am interested in what everybody else has to say, I'm not going to hog up the whole time, so, who wants to go next?
May I jump in?
Yeah.
So, a couple of things. First of all, I don't, I'm a little concerned that we're derailing some of this discussion by the talk of Kettland's Boulevard, which has, is something that isn't on any of these slides. Personally, I don't think that would be my first, second, or, you know, high-priority choice for a road that would be altered.
Fair enough.
Got a lot of issues. I think that one step that would be easy for us to do, and as somebody who's now been, I've been riding a bicycle around the city since the, for this year, I think the changing the sidewalk policy is something that I'd support. As, you know, when I'm on the bike with my son, I'm not riding in the street as much as I can avoid. I think the committee in general supported that concept, although would prefer to not allow, to retain the ban on bicycles on the sidewalk in this part of the city, in the central business district, because frankly, there's just not enough room for pedestrians and bicycles and cars, where the rest of the city isn't as much of an issue. The real policy discussion that needs to be decided at this, up here at the dais, is at what level we want to move toward as a city. Do we want, there are people on the committee who would really like to see us get to the point where we can use bicycles as ways to commute to work. I am dubious that there's enough demand for that, or will be at any point in the near term, but we could certainly test some pieces of that, and if we could get a grant and do some bike share, especially around here where we have access to Shady Grove Metro, perhaps, that would be interesting to try. But going from the point where you have a bunch of unconnected neighborhoods with low-stress roads and connecting those has been where I've been focusing my attention over the last couple of years and work with this committee, is to try to figure out how to bridge some of those gaps, which is what the study is all about. So, there's a lot of different pieces of the puzzle here that it's going to be, you know, this is not something that we're going to resolve over the course of the next year, as much as the committee would like to, but, you know, the question is how, you know, are we willing to take the big leap and say, you know, the goal is to let people commute to work in Gaithersburg and encourage that, or are we just trying to get to the point where you can ride around beyond your neighborhood with greater safety?
Yeah, and I think that's a really, that's a really good question, and I think the idea of trying to, as cost-efficiently and with as much balance as we can, try to connect, you know, fill in those gaps, I think that makes a lot of sense. But go ahead, Ryan, you were going to say something.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that gets to the issue of sort of the chicken-and-egg problem here, right? I mean, if we build it, will the bikers come? And if we never build it, will we be able to say, "Oh, there's not enough demand," because, of course, there aren't the facilities to allow the demand to flourish. Neil beat me to the punch a little bit in talking about bike share, which is really what I wanted to focus on tonight, I know there's a lot of different pieces to your presentation. And there are questions that remain regarding whether there's enough demand for bike facilities as a true transport mode in this portion of the county, but we have seen significant expansion in the mid-county in the last couple of years of Capital Bike Share. It's now starting to approach city boundaries, if you look at what's happening in Rockville and what's happening in other parts of the mid-county, around the Life Sciences Corridor, along Key West Avenue. Those stations are getting closer and closer to the city. And so, one of the things that I wanted to talk about tonight was whether we can get some consensus to provide guidance from the Mayor and Council to the staff, to be a bit more proactive in exploring those possibilities for locating and funding maybe a couple of bike-share stations, at least to start as an experiment perhaps, to connect to the existing network that's growing and getting closer and closer to the city boundaries, and as the mayor said, you know, might provide, if not, a robust commuting option at this point, at the very least, that first-mile, last-mile connection to transit, or the option to use bike mode as a way to shop or go to restaurants, even if it's not a way to commute to work for some people. So, I wanted to throw that out there to see if we could get some consensus for some guidance about that, not committing to any particular location or any particular funding amount at this point, obviously, but we have seen a couple of very large grant opportunities that have, you know, in my opinion, maybe passed us by a little bit, because the county and the city of Rockville have been looking at those, and we had made a decision a few years ago that we just weren't quite ready to commit to that, which is fine, I think it was a justifiable decision, it may still be, but I do think it's worth at least experimenting a little bit more proactively at this point to see what would happen from that chicken-and-egg perspective, if we were to put a couple of stations up somewhere and connect them to the existing network that's growing. So, I do want to throw that out there and thank the committee for your presentation, and see if we can get maybe some consensus from the council, Mr. Mayor, on whether or not that'd be worth exploring at this point, or at least just giving some guidance to staff to let them know that it's something we'd be interested in exploring more proactively.
So, let me throw this question over to Tony, because Tony and I have had discussions over the last couple of years, on occasion about bike share, and I know there was some staff concerns about the ongoing operational cost, so, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is embedded in it is that it appears to be you can get funding to have a station put in, but that each station, even popular stations, do not make money, and some of them lose multiple tens of thousands of dollars every year, and the jurisdiction is intense, is the intention is, we will have to make up the difference.
They recover their losses through us.
It's difficult, because, you know, you're aiming a lot of funding at something that, as Neil pointed out, we don't really know that a lot of people are going to use, because we're a little bit further out from the periphery, and commuting patterns are hard to change, and commuting from a commercial basis on days that aren't too hot or too cold or too wet, you know, it's difficult to get into that routine like you can in a more urban area. So, it's a little bit of a turkey shoot, and you'd be putting up a good bit of money. It's an interesting contrast to some of the other work session presentations, like the nonprofits, that, you know, we have lots of people waiting that could use additional funding for service projects, you know, we know that that's the case. This is a little bit harder to get your arms around, but something that locks us into an unknown future expense, you know, is not something that we've done in the past, and, you know, obviously, it'll be up to you guys to give us direction on that.
I think that's a fair point, I understand that, I've had a lot of discussions with Tony and with Dennis about this over the last several months, and I do understand that, that sense of caution. I'm wondering if we can't maybe think creatively, you know, in the coming months and try and figure out if there's something, some funding arrangement that could be explored that might help mitigate that concern about operating costs. I don't know what that would look like, but, you know, maybe there's some opportunities with certain kinds of grants that provide operating cost money, maybe there's partnerships with the county, or partnerships with the private sector, who knows? But, I think it's worth at least taking another look at, but at the same time, I do understand the fair concerns that you're expressing, and that we do have a lot of resources.
Have we taken a look, or could we take a look at the bike share that are literally on our border? So, there's some down on, I think Omega Drive has one down by the.
The college, Shady Grove.
Could we look at them to see their usership and their cost recovery at this time?
We could try, it's my understanding that user data is not readily available. It's my understanding that user data is not readily available from, only the one company pretty much that's in the business.
But I did ask Dennis about that as well, Rob. We're on the same page thinking about that. And, I mean, while he didn't have tons of details at times that I asked him, he did look at this issue and he seemed to believe that the data, the limited amount of data that was available showed that the usage of those stations sort of on the periphery of the existing network was admittedly not great.
No.
So.
Yeah, the county decided to put them there, though. You know, that's the thing, is that they picked those locations to put those bike share stations and it's, you know, they're no different than the locations we would use here. They're not anywhere close, approximate to, to mass transit, to metro. So, you know, we've talked about putting them at the Mark Station and allowing people who commute by Mark to, to ride their bike to NIST campus or to First Field or, you know, along there or downtown as well. You know, so I, it would seem like Kentland's might be a good, sorry, good location for, for that as well. But I, I agree. We don't have the data to, to justify doing that. But I'm curious as to what data the county and the city of Rockville have used to justify the locations of those stations, those bike share stations as well. So, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Rob.
And I don't know what, what the Rockville's doing, what the county's doing, but looking at it, it looks like they're just leaning forward a little bit. I mean, there's a lot of development coming in around Shady Grove. There's the LSC coming in and coming all the way up to where we are. You know, Crown's building out and there's still a lot more left there. So, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go putting bike share all over Gaithersburg. It looks like it's going to creep northward. It makes sense, I think, that the Crown would be the first area that we would have it in the city, just as density-wise, it makes the most sense. But I think we need to be cautious, but, but also pursuing. So, you know, when I heard that we, there was money out there in, in form of grants that was not pursued by the city but was pursued by the county in Rockville, I was kind of like, why wouldn't we pursue that? So we should be looking for opportunities like that. And we should be cognizant of this is a mode of transportation that may become more appropriate as the years go by, as we increase our density, as the county builds up its connectivity to our area. So, I'm interested. I'm not sure we're there yet throughout the entire city. I, I think it's probably coming and it'll probably come towards our south first.
Can I jump in with one more point? In a discussion with Dennis, he pointed to, I guess there's a, there's a, a fair fund of, of money, millions of dollars, I guess, that the county has got on our behalf that's related to transportation, that if we, that we have to make a case for it and get the county to approve spending what we think is our money and they think is their money, that may be something that would be appropriate for this sort of project.
Yep.
Didn't we add this as a specific item on there?
We attempted to add it.
Yeah, I don't think it's, we, we got the MOU.
It hasn't been finalized.
Agreed to.
But wasn't it, wasn't some, didn't some other municipality, whether it was Rockville or somebody, use their version of their, of their funds recently? Or the county used their version of their funds recently to do the same thing?
Well, Rockville has used their funds, but they've used it for roadway improvements, not for bicycle improvements.
I thought Dennis told me that someone in the jurisdictions had just recently used their funds from that account for bike share. So precedent had been set. But, you know, I guess precedent is in the eye of the beholder, right?
There's a way to get to, from Old Town to Shady Grove Metro by bike, that might be a really good use of bike share, although there was much discussion at the committee about that. And there's, doesn't seem to be an obvious route at present anyway, and not an obvious place to build one if, if we wanted to go that, that route, but. Well, the most obvious and direct route would be down 355 from Old Town to, to the Shady Grove Metro Station. That's, but I think so, this is the problem that we have. And, you know, I agree with, with what you and Ryan said earlier about looking at low-stress networks that we can fill out first. And, you know, where people can go from a residential neighborhood to a denser, somewhat urban core, such as Kentland's Shopping Center, Crown, Rio, et cetera, and those, those neighborhoods. I think those are probably doable and they're probably going to be, it's, it's not only important that they be acceptable to potential bike riders, but they have to be acceptable to people who don't ride bikes and who drive cars. Okay, so that means we have to take care of, make sure that their through lanes are clear and safe, safe for the drivers of those cars as well as the driver, riders of those bicycles. And, and, and that we don't disrupt or impede traffic flow, efficient traffic flow, because that's a much more major concern. If we look back at your slide, of that 51, well, probably 80% of the people that were, that responded to that questionnaire is, how is this going to affect me driving and me commuting in my car or in a bus to wherever I need to go? So I think that that's the other consideration. I think it would be good to know a little bit more, you described Montgomery County's bike-friendly initiatives. I'd like to know a little bit more about those and why we can't implement some of those initiatives within the city, aside from the breezeway. I'd like to know what kind of interactions you, your committee has had with the other committees, who, and we've talked about this in recent presentations, about the overlap in interests and responsibilities in charge of the various committees. So have you worked with the Environmental Affairs Committee? Have you looked at the, worked with the Economic Development Committee? And either, even the Senior Advisory Committee to see how this mode of transportation can intersect with the, the priorities of those committees? I think that's important because if you really want to build support for this, then it's not just up here that has to be convinced. I think you have to convince other, other groups of people that are working on some of these issues. So, frankly, I guess one of the concerns I have is, the committee spent a lot of time on one form, one mode of transportation, right? No argument. So I'm wondering why we call it Transportation Committee? Why don't we just rename it the Bicycle Committee?
We do regularly spend time each meeting on other initiatives. Most of them are under state jurisdiction or county jurisdiction. So, our, our concern is that we want to be able to provide actionable steps.
Sure, sure. Well, that's, so that's another problem we have with the bike network, is that many of our streets are state or county streets. And so we don't control them, we can't, we have to cooperate with the state and the county. And most of those are major arterials where traffic is a significant factor. So, you know, I, I have been in a number of different cities recently due to my NIH travel and city travel. I've been downtown Pittsburgh, which has a beautiful bike network and dedicated lanes for bicycling. I've been in San Diego, the same thing, but also has major arterials. Been in Austin, Texas, and, you know, any number of cities that I could describe where this has been implemented to some extent. But, but it's also had enough time to generate a large population that uses bicycles as a mode of commuting. I don't think we're at that point yet. And I'm, and, you know, if you build it, they will come, maybe. I'm, I'm still not convinced. I think in some parts of the metro DC region, I think that that's clearly a possibility. We're never going to be Portland, Oregon, where 50% of commuters are actually bikers. The issue about sidewalks and sidewalk sharing, I think it's an important issue. I, you know, I've ridden on the wide path down Great Seneca and Quince Orchard Road. But not all sidewalks are equal. There are certainly some sidewalks, and I think Neil's already touched upon that, that it's just not appropriate to have bicycles on. But usually those are adjacent to neighborhood or, or narrower streets where people should be able to share the street with a bicycle, where drivers should be able to do that. But we have to be very, we have to be careful about that. The other part of it is that there are enthusiastic bikers who are actually very aggressive and not friendly to pedestrians, regardless, or to automobiles, regardless of where, what path they choose to ride in. So, there is that segment of the, of the biking community. Some of us have witnessed it personally at, when we were running or walking, or seen it when we're driving in our cars. So, I think those are things that we have to, have to think about. I, the, the ability to, to fill out some of our network now, I think is what, what we should do first is what's really doable. And I think perhaps rightly so, and not looking at bike share opportunities perhaps has something to do with the, your costs and the operating of that, of that system. So, but what I guess I would like your committee to do, this is a great report, and I know you guys have worked very hard on it, but I'd like you to spend the next year, in addition to looking at how we become a bicycle-friendly city, is, is looking at other modes of transportation and how we can improve and enhance them so that walkers and drivers can also enjoy the benefits of, of your wisdom and the perspective that you have to provide, so.
Ollie, I want to follow up with you on the, on the suggestion about sidewalks and changing our law or within the city on that. What is your, what is the staff perspective on that?
I think maybe my perspective is most of the areas around here do it, the opposite of what the city does, so they allow it on the sidewalks. And I think the part that the committee said is if you did something like that, I think you would have the option to prohibit it in certain locations. So if you decided that Old Town was a location that you didn't want to do it, you would prohibit that by a traffic order. But in general, what you would do is by, and once again, this is just a traffic, my traffic viewpoint, by doing this, you would, you would parallel what's being done in Montgomery County and many other places. There's pluses and minuses to either way. One's not exactly right. You're just, in my mind, you're being in concert with, with the larger part of the state by doing it this way. And you certainly have the power to restrict it where you don't want it.
Okay. All right, so before I throw this out to the audience here, the question, do we have consensus? We're not voting on things tonight, it's a work session, but do we have consensus by nodding or shaking of heads on Tony and staff looking into, more deeply into the bike share program?
Looking into.
Yeah, looking into.
Not committing to any.
And coming, come, come back to us with, with the facts and, and staff perspective on it, that'd be great. Do we have consensus on taking a look at the sidewalk law in the city, bikes on sidewalks as recommended by the committee?
Yeah, I would like to introduce the, they actually have the ordinance drafted up. I would like to introduce it at one of the up, near upcoming sessions, MCC sessions. And we're that far along at the Transportation Committee, they're just waiting.
Would have been nice to see that tonight. But anyway, I think, I don't have any problem with that, but.
Well, so, okay. So we have, do we have consensus on considerations?
Again, based on my experience at riding around the city, I think it's actually safer to allow people on the sidewalks. And sidewalk traffic in most parts of the city is not that intense, or I don't think we'd be causing any great issues.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that.
I brought it to the council and then the council asked that I go to Transportation. They delivered it, and now it's kind of been sitting there. So I'd like to just move on it. I, I've ridden my bike around the city. Actually, what kind of got me thinking about this, I saw Neil and Sam riding on one of the sidewalks near Quince Orchard Road. There are places around the city.
Officer, will you please cover your ears for a second?
Actually, I think he was on the multi-use path. But there are some areas of this city where it's, it's downright unsafe to ride on the road, and that's what we're forcing folks to do. Either that or violate the law. So, I think we should move forward with this.
All right, so clearly you're in favor, and I, I'm seeing a bunch of.
You know, the other part, and I, I know you guys have talked about this before, but we didn't really talk about it tonight, is public education about bicycle safety and awareness of people on bicycles regardless of what kind of road you're on. And I think that that's probably got to be the first step in being a bicycle-friendly city, is making sure that the entire population is aware of that and that they have to share the road, or in some cases, the sidewalk. Well, but I think you make a great point, Mike, in that, I mean, years, years ago, before I was up on the council, the sharrows appeared on the road. And I have to say, people had no idea what they meant. And so I know there was an article in, in Gaithersburg when they first appeared, but that was kind of it. And that's not a sufficient level of education to really let people know what's going on. I don't know how you, how we do better, given the, the media that are available to us. But I agree, I think we need to, you know, if we're going to share the sidewalk, people need to be respectful of, of how they use it. And if they're, you know, if they're going to share the road, it's the same deal.
Right.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I didn't see it in the slideshow, Jerry, but I know in years past, there was actually a checklist of things, action items that needed to occur to achieve, achieve certain levels of bike-friendly city status. I didn't see that this year. I know we talked about it a little bit.
It was last year's deck.
Yeah, I mean, what I would want to know is, what concrete steps do you need from us to get this designation? And you don't need to answer that now, you can, you know, send a report up.
I, I would say that the reason why we emphasized having some infrastructure is that things like education, enforcement, and so on, I think, we think there's multiple E's that the application was spread into. And the feeling is that, you know, the amount of education or enforcement you do really won't mean much if the roads aren't that safe. And the idea of having a safe path to get, get among all the state parks is really what the Gaithersburg Network was about. And we thought that was a more urgent, earlier step. But we still have all the, the materials from, you know, what it takes to actually be designated a bicycle-friendly city. It's just that if you want to be a bicycle-friendly city, you ought to be a bicycle-friendly city. If you're on a bike, it, it ought to be somewhat safe for you to do so and to go the kind of distances, even if it's not the straightest way. I think that's what that, that Gaithersburg Network. And it turns, it turns out that most of those little connections that are needed are not a huge deal.
It was all about the connectivity. There's a couple of them.
Well, I mean, there's certain stuff, like what Mike was talking about. Education was one of the E's. And then we check a block, we've got the solicitation on the street with the transportation planner, so we're checking blocks. What I'd like to know is what progress do we need in order to get this designation?
You know, I'm less worried about having a designation than just being a friendly city for bicycles. But, you know, if we're going to be a bicycle-friendly city, we have to be a pedestrian-friendly city first. I think that's the most important thing. And I'm not convinced that, I know we have, that's a major goal for us, and I don't know whether we have some kind of official national designation that we're pedestrian-friendly, but that's always been a major goal. If we're pedestrian-friendly, I think we're going to find a way to become bicycle-friendly. But I think that we, we need to look at the intersection of those two things and try and plan for that as well. Because I think that connectivity that we, that pedestrians has, have will parallel the connectivity that bikers have.
I, I think, I, I believe that both items, pedestrian friendliness and bike friendliness are parts of our existing strategic plan. And so I'm not sure if we, if we need to, like, a couple of the major points that you guys are making are improve the connectivity between our existing paths. I think that's already part of our strategic plan. Am I correct, Ollie?
It is as a, it is as a, and I don't know if the goal's the word, but I think the question is, how do we, how do we get to this point? What, what are the next steps? And from my standpoint, and we have nine or 10 gaps that we're looking at. Three of them are more detailed studies, the one across I-370, connection between Lakeland's and the Old Town Bike Way. And we recommend it in here that we have to get grants for those. And those are intensive enough studies, I think we need to approach that. We, we won't know if we get the grants until sometime in the early part of next year, but I think that's one, that's one item we wanted to hear from you. From my standpoint, the other six items are connectivity issues. And I just wanted to get feedback from the council that the general idea is these, these streets are at different stress levels, but they're obviously not low-stress levels. And the, the, the goal that the staff would take is go out and see what it would take to reduce the stress level of those streets. We couldn't, it doesn't commit you to doing anything. We would come back to you. And, and Kentland's Boulevard was one, West Deer Park is one, Washington Boulevard is one. We would come back with a report and say, for us to do this, here's the options, here's what it would take, and here's the cost.
Right.
And that gives me some direction on what to do, what, where to move from like the 10% to 30%.
Right.
At that point, you'll have many of the facts in front of you and you can tell us, yes, we want to proceed with this, or I know you don't.
And we need to, obviously, we need to consider it in the context of all of our other capital budget items. But I think there's, there's definitely a place and, and interest in, in you getting us that information to, to consider. And we'll, we'll see where the grants are and, but I, you know, it being already on our strategic plan, I think we're, we're on the same page. We just need to, we need to get there.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Ollie a question?
Go ahead.
There are some specific asks in this PowerPoint slide, and I just wanted to make sure you got sufficient direction on each of the asks from us as to which way you should be heading with them.
I think the, the major points for me, there's three major points for me. One is the NIST work, and we were, we're having a meeting with all the players in that in mid-December, and we will probably be coming back to you about that. Basically, what this state is saying is for us to really be able to finalize this and to. enter it with an MOU with you, we're going to need some sort of financial agreement. So I would be back to you after we meet with the state to see exact, what, what I've told them is, you've got to tell us what you're asking for, so I can take it to the council. I just can't tell them you want something. I need to know exactly what you want. So we will be back to you on that. Second item is, is the, is the idea of taking the bigger studies to, to grants, and that's something that we could do at a staff level. And then the third item, I guess, is just the, the idea from the council is they would like to see what it would take on the other half dozen missing links to reduce the stress of those. And that's, if I get that sort of direction, then I can go out and move from 10% to 30% and come back to you and get decisions from the mayor and council before we move from 30% to final.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought that last year we funded a gap study for the 10 designated gaps in our recreational network, and that those would be studied, and that we'd be talking about going to design and construction come this budget season.
I mean, once again, it's, we, we funded for, for concepts, and we did it internally. But the example, I, I can't move to design on something until I know the level you want me to design it to. And the example I used was Kettlin's Boulevard. I, I know a litany of things will work there. I also know that many of those have impacts. I can't go, if I have moving a lane, moving parking, put it down the center, put it on the side of the street. Those are four diff, possible concepts I could be looking at. I can't design for all four, so I need to get some direction on the level that you want us to look at. If the direction you're giving staff is, I want you to take the roads, these connector roads that are higher stress levels, and come back and tell me what it takes to reduce the stress of that, that's pretty specific, and someone can come back and tell me that. And if it ends up being either a cycle track, or it ends up being a shared path, they could tell us the pluses and minuses of those, and the costs associated with those. And at the 30% level, much like we did with Plaza, you can give us some direction on which one of those, if any, you want us to move to, and then we would take the, basically the approved concept and move to final design on that. Helped, or did I confuse people?
Well, I didn't think that Kettlin's Boulevard was part of the.
No, it absolutely is.
Yeah, we, we had 10 specific, discreet designated areas of our network that we wanted to build out.
Correct.
The $30,000 was funded to, to do something.
Right.
And I'm not sure what that something ultimately entails.
It was to decide concepts, and quite frankly, we did that in-house because we knew more about those streets than most other people did. West Deer Park is one. It is, we know that we have some choices to do on there. We also know that that will probably cause some reconstruction of the median of West Deer Park. So if the goal is to provide a bicycle facility on that, we can come back to you with, we know that we can get it in there.
Well, so, Ali, the way I see this is, we have as a strategic goal to improve our networks. None of us up here is transportation engineer. What we need is for you to take that sort of broader priority, that we would like to increase, we would like connectivity between our paths. And you and, and your staff and your colleagues present to us what you think is the best approach to make that happen.
And we can do that, and I would, I would generally follow the, the guidelines that Montgomery County is trying to do right now with their streets. I would parallel something to that. And that is generally the idea of taking, looking at them, seeing what the existing stress level is, and see what it takes to reduce the stress. And we can do that, and that would be basically from the 10% to 30% design.
Well, let's look at, so, the fiscal request number two is labeled inner neighborhood loops, that that would seem to address some of these, of things that are doable, probably reasonable targets, of course, Kettlin's Boulevard, long draft is on there, but that would certainly be part of that.
Yes.
So maybe that's where, a good place to start, in terms of looking for recommendations from staff on, on how to proceed. I think that addresses your issues too, about whatever, it's not the 10, it's only six of them, still.
Right.
But those are, these are, yeah. But, you know, it's every part, almost every part of the city is addressed with this as well, so.
Okay, let me, let me put it out, did you have more, Rob, or?
Oh, I always have more, but I think we've got.
I want to, I want to invite anybody, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this topic, these topics? Not seeing anyone, okay. Ali, Tony, do you guys feel guided?
I, I think we can move it forward. I mean, the CIP for bike pathways has several million dollars going through it, from FY15 to '21. You know, we should be able to make some progress. We, we do feel kind of stuck a little bit in the middle on this, but I think some of these studies that you guys have given us today will, will help move it along a little bit. I think we'll have more to say at budget time, when we're able to compare it with other capital projects.
And I don't want you guys necessarily to feel stuck in the middle, and I understand what Ali's saying, always sort of, always saying, well, we want to know the degree to which you want to potentially impact things as they currently stand. But it's hard for us to know the right answer to that.
Yeah.
We probably, I, I agree with Mike very much, that we, we need to be sensitive to drivers, because that's the major mode of transportation, and we need to be sensitive to pedestrians. So to the degree that we can make decisions that move us forward on bikes that don't, or they don't impact, or they minimize impacts on those two constituencies, that would be fantastic. And where there, there is an unavoidable impact, then we should, I guess we, we really need to know the, the pros and cons of each approach.
I mean, I think we're talking two things here, there's the, the more immediate, more discrete build-out of our recreational network, which was designated as the 10 different connectors that would ultimately put a loop through our park system. And that was the thing that I thought we funded with the $30,000 to start looking at, and that we would actually talk about starting design and construction now. The, the bigger picture of, you know, Kettlin's Boulevard, converting our streets into bike lanes, I, I agree with Mike, I think that there's a balance that needs to occur there, we need to consider multi-mode transportation, we need to consider cars, we need to consider protections, but that's what I'm viewing as more in the out. What, what I would like to focus in on is getting something in the budget for the coming year that'll move us forward from just concept to ultimately designing construction of this, this thing we've been talking about, which is the build-out of our recreational network. At the very least, that seems like a good, short-term goal for us, and then we can start talking about which direction we want to take the city with respect to converting Kettlin's Boulevard into bike tracks and whatnot. I see them as two different issues. I'd like to move forward on the one and be more thoughtful in the second.
I, I don't, I don't disagree. I mean, low-hanging fruit first, and, and we'd have these, these sort of simple steps that can, that can increase connectivity, and, you know, let's take a look at that first. Are you guys, are we all on the same page here?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, because I know we're making my neighbors nervous with all this talk about Kettlin's Boulevard. I think if we changed the sidewalk policy, then the whole Kettlin's Boulevard issue is moot, and there's, Kettlin's Boulevard is already enough of a mess. We're putting a bicy, a dedicated bicycle track on that road. I, I just can't imagine how we wouldn't be killing people, so.
Doesn't it have a wide sidewalk already?
I ride it quite bike-friendly, because everybody else has any stop signs, you know.
Yeah.
I stop at the stop sign.
I think we should probably put charros on one lane of Kettlin's Boulevard.
I'm not sure I'd even go that far, but regardless, I think.
There could be fates too.
The lowest hanging fruit in my mind on this is sidewalks. They're already there, and as long as we're, you know, we take the appropriate steps in terms of education, and, and where they're not okay, that, I think that would be very helpful. The gap, the 10 identified gaps, you know, I'm a little disappointed that we're not getting a presentation of exactly what we're going to do with the ones that were identified on the gap study, and hopefully that will come up as we go into, into budget and CIP time. I think that, you know, that was an important piece. Again, going back, and Mike, it was just, just want to point out that you're the one that started this whole bike-friendly city investigation, because you said we should find out what it takes, and that's really where a lot of this has come from.
Well, so we're still trying to find out what it's going to take. I think it's, I don't have any problem with it.
Look, I'm not trying to pick on you here, I'm just, just pointing out that you, that you started this mess.
Oh, it's okay.
But no, it was a good thing, and it's been a great, really informative process. But I think that, to me, that there are a lot of secondary issues that needed to be addressed, including education. But the primary one is if you don't have a network with a bunch of connectivity, then you're not a bicycle-friendly city, no matter what else you do. So connectivity seemed the first thing, and all the rest of it could come, if we connect all this, a low-stress network of city streets where you can ride your bike and get from point A to point B, and, and not be nervous about it, then, then we can, then we'll find out if people are, are willing to ride and need the ride in the, in the city to a greater extent than they do today. And it's probably not that expensive to do that.
Well, you know, even, I, I rattle off a list of cities that I've visited where I'd seen these bike lanes, but I would point out that every one of those cities, not every street in those cities is a bicycle-friendly street.
And not in urban core as well.
And, and whether, you know, and those cities have suburban, outlined suburban communities that are still somewhat connected to a, a network, but it's a, it's a very focused connection. It's not, you know, a web of connections, it's, it's usually one, one road that is accessible and safe for bicycling, that connects to one, a network that serves a larger, denser area or suburban area. So, you know, it's important to remember that. We're not going to make every street a bicycle-friendly street.
Right.
And we don't control those, a lot of those streets either, so I think we have to remember that.
So I think we're, we may finally be all on the same page here, so.
I agree with Neil, so. That was a pretty good summary.
Okay. Well done. Thank you all very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Very productive. Next, we have our annual briefing from the Old Town Advisory Committee Subcommittee.
It's okay. Camera's off, you can reach down and push the USB.
Coming to the table. Tom Waterian, our Economic Development Director, Sharon Disck, our other Economic Development Director, and Jim McNulty from the committee.
And thanks for the opportunity to brief you on the activities of the Old Town Advisory Subcommittee. It's a pleasure to work with a group that's so dedicated to Old Town, and our membership includes people that have an interest not just in businesses in Old Town, but also from the perspective of a resident. Tonight, we've got Jim McNulty, who will make our annual presentation. He joined OTAC this year, and we appreciate his media and marketing expertise that he's brought. So let's start off.
Great. Thank you, Sharon, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to thank Tom and Sharon for their guidance and their leadership. It's been a pleasure to, to serve on this committee this past year, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city. OTAC, for those who don't know, we are the eyes and ears of Old Town. We are an interdisciplinary subcommittee comprised of residents, business owners, and property owners. We had more than a dozen members of our committee this year, and I would be remiss if we didn't mention Henry Marafa, who was our council liaison, and Old Town is definitely at a loss for, for losing Henry. He was a big supporter of Old Town, and we will miss him. We also want to thank Kathy Driscoll for her participation in the committee. She joined as a resident once she left the, the city council, and we wish her well in her retirement, and we will miss her very much. So what do we do? We advocate for, for Old Town. Unlike the newer downtown-type locations in Gaithersburg, such as Brio, Washingtonian, the Kentlands, Downtown, Crown, Spectrum, Old Town does not have one developer that owns all the commercial spaces. Neighborhood conditions here are not controlled by a central management company. So our committee serves as a voice for the priorities that relate to new investment, safety, and the appearance of Old Town. The goals that the committee follows were set forth by the council, and these shape our activities. So whether we are reviewing proposed regulations with regard to regulatory changes, like zoning text amendments, development proposals, or studying demographic characteristics that affect the success of local businesses, our group remains focused on maintaining the heart of Gaithersburg. And Old Town has been making some progress. We definitely had some successes in 2016, not the least of which was the completion of the crossings at Old Town, which was an estimated investment of $46 million in the city. La Casita is now open. We had the opportunity to review some of the documents for the new Park Plaza at Summit and Diamond, and as well as the Fishman site that is under development at this time. But of course, there are continuing challenges. We do have a higher office vacancy rate than the rest of the city. There is an upcoming WSSC project that is promising to be rather disruptive, and there are key sites that are yet to be redeveloped. But these challenges also provide opportunities. New businesses will move into vacant spaces, new investment can be attracted, and as we found out, and we'll get into this a little bit later, the large number of new residents that are moving into Old Town in the past five years, the fundamental market characteristics of Old Town are changing, and we think that's an opportunity as well. So in 2016, let me get into some of the specifics of, of what the committee looked into. As I mentioned, we reviewed the preliminary concept for the mixed-use project on the Fishman parcel. This is a city-owned property that has seen many development proposals in the past. Elstel Construction's plans would add urban-style apartments to this transit-rich location with ground-floor commercial spaces and a parking structure that would serve both residents and the public. At our second meeting, we had the opportunity to comment on the design of the Old Town Park Plaza. This project would help establish Old Town as a destination and enhance the other city-owned assets adjacent to it, like the community museum, the locomotive, and the train station. Our members strongly endorsed the interactive water feature landscaping and the integration of the existing ride-on stop as components needed for a successful plaza. We also spent a good amount of time looking at the potential of a business improvement district, which is defined, a defined geographic area where fees are collected to supplement public services. These are used in many urban areas to support revitalization. Locally, we have examples of the Bethesda Urban Partnership, Silver Spring Urban District, and the Wheaton Urban District. The, the guidelines in Maryland are rather high, and in 2016, the Maryland General Assembly bid supporters proposed changing the state requirements associated with establishing new districts. Our committee reviewed the failed state legislation and discussed how Old Town might benefit if a bid were established here. We will continue to follow any relevant legislative changes proposed in the 2017 session of the General Assembly. Oftentimes, when people talk about revitalization of Old Town, they'll say, oh, you need a Starbucks, or you need a Five Guys, or, you know, another popular retailer. So we had the opportunity to view a video from Starbucks and reviewing some of the requirements from other various retailers like Dunkin' Donuts, Aldi, and a few others, to look at what a corporation considers when looking to invest in a new location. They have very specific criteria that they're trying to meet. So the committee members spent the evening reviewing some of those policies that they have in place when making those decisions. And that kind of took us into a further discussion of neighborhood demographics. There's certainly a perception of what Old Town is. And what we, what we continue to look at is, you know, how would a location professional evaluate the neighborhood? Many companies use Esri, which is the same service that the city uses for its GIS system. The city staff pulled together some demographic information for Old Town, which drove a conversation about the retail market demand in the immediate area. Much to our surprise, within a half an hour, half an hour, half a mile radius of the Plaza, the largest segments are now called American Dreamers and Metro Renters. And let me give you just a little detail on that. American Dreamers are family-centric, average household size of just over three, 65% owner-occupied homes. They're captivated by new technology, they're very connected using the internet for socialization and, and convenience, like Bill Pay. Metro Renters are the smallest household size at 1.66. 80% of them rent, they're well-educated consumers, interested in the fine arts, value education and creativity, enjoying wine bars and restaurants. These two segments account for 51% of the residents within a half a mile of the, the proposed Park Plaza at Summit and Diamond. These are not what most people think of when they think of Old Town-Gaithersburg. So it's evidence of the changing demographics here. Towards the end of the year, we had the opportunity to meet with Officer Dan Lane from Gaithersburg Police Department to talk about, you know, updated crime statistics. And one of the things that. things that kind of came up is, you know, sure, there are certain data points for existing crime in Old Town, but a lot of it has been, it's the perception of what Old Town has been, and some of the challenges that we have of pointing out that it isn't as bad as people might think. And this was actually our last opportunity to have Kathy with us. So, we...
Sharon made a lovely cake. It was delicious.
One of the other, other things we got to talk about the end of the year was the fact that the, the committee has had the opportunity to provide input to the planning staff with regard to issues like zoning changes that might affect Old Town. At our last meeting, we discussed possible changes to zoning ordinances that relate to auto body repair shops and body shops. This, this topic will likely return in 2017 after planning has drafted a text amendment. But, there are some issues with grandfathered spaces already in Old Town. And unfortunately, this is a meeting that I missed, but I, I know there wasn't a discussion of special exceptions for some of the business, the facilities that are there. Obviously, along Diamond Avenue there, there are some older buildings that are not exactly the most friendly for new businesses wanting to come in there. So, that's 2016. Looking ahead to 2017, our objectives remain the same. We are consistent with our, our goal of supporting and attracting quality destination retailers and restaurants, and pursuing new residents and tenants to make Old Town thrive. You know, consistent goals with fundamental economic development principles. You know, Old Town, this is the heart, as we call it, the heart of Gaithersburg, and it's important that, that this section of the city continues to thrive, and we look for, for new and innovative ways to attract quality people, quality businesses to Old Town. So, that, with that, we could open up to questions from the council.
Thank you very much, Jim, Tom, Sharon. We appreciate all of the work that you and your fellow volunteers on that committee give to the city. I think you did a really good job of summarizing where we are. Certainly, Tom, what is it? We have two years left on the Enterprise Zone? Is that where, a year and a half?
Less than that, about 20 months.
There's, there's a great opportunity there for potential development. We've, we've had a few take advantage of it, and I know that there's stuff sort of bubbling up that who knows if it comes to fruition or not. But, to any in the development community out there, it's certainly a robust set of incentives that we, that are waiting for you in Old Town Gaithersburg. I share your optimism about, about Old Town, and certainly since, since I've been, you know, since Ryan and I were first elected and, and Mike before us, the major priority area in this city for the City Council has been Old Town Gaithersburg. So, and that continues, I'm sure. So, so, thank you. Anyone with questions or comments?
Can you tell us the number? So, you said 51% of people within, families within half a mile of the plaza are either American Dreamers or Metro Renters. So, what is that actual raw number or approximate number? Are we talking about, you know, thousands of people or hundreds of people?
Yeah, I, I don't have the actual numbers, but I would imagine it's in the thousands.
Okay. And the, the income levels associated with Dreamers and Renters are...
Let's see. The, the Metro Renters, because they tend to be fairly young, they're probably, maybe median income.
So, they're the AMI for the...
They tend to be recent college graduates.
Okay.
And then the American Dreamers are at about the same. And I think they're attracted to the area because of the rent levels. So, that's why you would see household incomes that are similar, even though one has an average household size slightly larger.
Well, so, the other part of it is interesting because most of the owner-occupied housing is actually not modern, contemporary, or recently built. It's been around for a long time. So, you have the historic district of Deer Park neighborhood. The rest of it, all of the new buildings are all rental, multifamily rental, along with some of the, the legacy garden apartments that have been here for 40 years. So, it's, it's interesting. But, I think even those populations are turning over as well. So, so, one of the questions I had, and I gave Tom a heads-up that I was going to ask this because I always ask about it, is that when I look at the, the committee and the committee, I want to compliment the committee for this very thorough report and work, is that when we look at the businesses that have been in Old Town and that are in Old Town, the new ones as well as those that have been here for a long time, a number of them are Hispanic-owned businesses or Hispanic service-focused, whether they're a restaurant or a market or something like that. Yet, I don't see, I know how difficult it's been to try and recruit owners or managers from those, from those businesses to participate. But, the fact that they've been so successful for such a long period of time, and that the new, the newest, the two newest establishments that have come in, Don Hore and La Casita, obviously see something here that has attracted them and, you know, helped them decide to make an investment. Why is it possible to gain the insight of people from that community, from the Hispanic community, participate in our committees? What's your, you know?
I think we could both probably answer this. One, I certainly need to give a lot of credit to Sharon in particular for, at the request of, of you last year, and also because it's just good practice. Sharon has been very proactively, been going directly business-to-business with invitations in writing and invitations verbally extending it to these business owners. She did it after the last session, and she's done it routinely throughout the year. That has gained some traction. There has been at least one new member. A second potential came last month to, to scout it out. But, I would say the biggest problem has been their time. They, they run and manage successful businesses, and the, the most common answer, and, and given, given the traffic in these establishments, we can, we can back up their story, that they just don't have the staffing. These places are not generally staffed with lots and lots of people.
Right.
They are running it. So, the commitment is hard for them to make, and candidly, we appreciate their honesty upfront to say, "We just don't know if we can make the commitment to the committee." But, to your point about whether or not we're obtaining the perspective of the Latino business owner, we are. It would be nice to have them on the committee for sure, but our communication with the Old Town business community is consistent. And so, we do hear from them whether or not they're, they're on the committee or not. If that gives you any...
Well, you know, so, I spoke with the manager, Don Hore, and at La Casita, the family that owns it as well. And they, they remarked at how responsive the city and staff has been from every level, from your office to the inspection, to inspectors and everything else. And their experience has been, you know, very good. They're always complimentary about that. And, you know, I usually ask them before I tell them who, you know, that I'm with the city. So, that's a good thing. And, you know, but then I give my card, and I say, "Look, if you have any issues, we'd love to have your input. We, we need to know what you think and how we can improve the climate, the business climate for you. We want you to succeed." By and large, I think those businesses are succeeding. So...
Well, we've been declined by many of them. Several have extended the invitation for the committee to meet within their establishments. We have done that.
Maybe that's a way to get them engaged. So, I don't know. Anyway, that's, so, I, I knew you would have the answer, and I think that, but I think it's important that, and I'm glad to hear that they're offering perspective even. When you go visit them, that's pretty important.
Yeah. When we know about, for example, the WSSC project that's proposed, I'll run around giving out flyers, because I know people won't make it to meetings, but it will be affecting their business. When we looked at changing the parking hours in one of the lots, went around to each of the businesses that would be affected. If they can't make a meeting, that doesn't mean we shouldn't be finding what their opinion is.
Right. Well, that's good. So...
Questions, comments?
So, not that we're, not that we necessarily have to name names here, but I'm curious, in the tapestry segmentation analysis, what kinds of retail, what types of retail, what sort of market spaces are we talking about when we think about these two profiles of American Dreamers and Metro Renters, you know, as we're thinking about the future of Old Town retail? I mean, I heard wine bars mentioned and restaurants, but, I mean, is there any, is there any sort of additional insight as to, you know, what kinds of businesses we might be focusing on, supporting or attracting?
The tapestry segmentation does get into detail, including preferences for which types of cell phones. It's, it's very extensive.
Okay.
I would say we actually do provide with the existing retail a good match for most people. Yes, everyone would like someplace to buy beer and wine and more restaurants.
Okay.
But, we have a concentration of more than 20 restaurants already, which I think a lot of people don't realize, just because they're spread down several blocks, and some of the spaces are, are small and may not even appear to be separate from the, the neighbor. But, yeah, everybody always wants a little bit more of the experiential retail, which is a common trend.
So, it, it seems that, at least anecdotally, some of the more prominent storefrontage, particularly retail, is, has some vacancies in Old Town. And so, I was wondering if you had any status updates on that. I know the first floor, Archstone, we talked about that. And then there's some buildings across from the Growlers that, I think some of them have filled up, but I think there's one vacancy currently.
Well, of course, the, the primary one is the vacant space, the ground floor of Archstone, as you mentioned.
Well, that, I mean, that's a unique situation.
That's a unique situation.
That's not necessarily a demand issue.
Is there any, I know, when I first came on, there was some discussion about permitting the owner to redesignate some of that space to residential, doing some swing space. But, I didn't hear anything about that afterwards.
It, it was left with the landlord to come back with a proposal.
Okay.
It's been months.
It's been more than six months. It's our sense that they would like to pursue conversion of that space to residential use or at least a portion of it. We did put it back in their court to present a formal proposal to the city, which we have been told they're working on. But, I, I would say that the vacancy there is not emblematic of, of retail vacancy issues in Old Town. In fact, it's, it's very contrary to that. The, the rents have stabilized, to have risen. There's very little. You identify maybe one, maybe two other vacancies around the district, around the Old Town. But, the vacancy rate generally, other than Old Town, is in the mid-single digits, not unlike most of the rest of the city. It's just finding contemporary space, you know, much like what La Casita just redid with Roy's. That's the level of investment that needs to convert this older space into space that can be used for today's businesses. So...
Just two other questions. And one is following up on you guys watching the video from Starbucks.
Uh-huh.
Which is interesting. Did that engender any discussion of what, and I realize as a city, you know, we really can't do much. Rentals are at the whim of the market. But, was there any discussion that was engendered as to what we could do more or anything? Do you want to ask the council, or things are just moving along, or?
Not, not from that discussion. I think what it brought to light for many people was that while it's wonderful to think that you can get a Starbucks, there is very specific site-location criteria, and in particular, average daily traffic count is not going to meet the requirement of Starbucks. We also went over the types of positions in the companies and the experiences of those individuals, so that people understood, "We're not dealing with someone who can be persuaded to believe otherwise," that these are business decisions based upon fact. I think what it did for the committee was let everyone have realistic expectations. It didn't mean we couldn't find good matches. It just meant, "Let's not waste energy on the targets that we'll never locate here."
I'm not saying I'd like the Starbucks down there. I perhaps like the coffee shop that is down there to stay open a bit longer. But, that was besides...
Yeah.
Can I just add my last question? Anything on the crossings? How they're, I see people going in there all the time. How's their, their occupancy coming? Any reports on that?
I only know anecdotally that there's more...
We're working with them on some of the moving issues. Half the building is permitted under a temporary occupancy permit. I think for 199 units, they reported 800 applications.
Okay.
So, hopefully, they're taking their best ones.
The answer is they're going to be full. They tend to park across the street and walk across the road in front of cars. That's how I know that people are going in there, is keep walking in front of them.
So, I, just a quick piggyback onto the second-to-last question that Rob had, which is, I assume we're fairly confident that the corporate side of retail America has a good understanding of the data from Old Town, right? I mean, we don't have to worry that they're, they're not aware of the, of the data that, you know, you and the committee just saw, or that there's some disconnect between what they're seeing and what we just saw versus, you know, local public perception, right? I mean, do we need to be doing outreach to educate those folks in commercial, you know, retail America about the data if they don't know about it, or if, you know, if, if they're not paying attention to it, or if for some strange reason, you know, their data reports are different from, from the ones you saw? Or, can we be pretty confident?
We can be pretty confident. What they can do is enter the criteria, and then the locations that meet their criteria will pop up. And the data sources are valid, quite valid. So, we don't need to be looking at means of correcting. There may be individual, you know, maybe this business closed and, and something else has opened since. But, overall, that market data has proven to them over and over again that a store will succeed if it locates at a spot that has particular characteristics based upon the ESRI data, which is probably the most popular.
And as the density has been increasing in Old Town with the crossings and with, you know, the potential development at the Fishman property, then that's going to increase the foot-traffic numbers that are available there. So, that will start to, you know, rise that tide, and maybe Old Town will start to qualify for some of these other pieces.
That's the City Council's theory as well.
Yeah.
That's what we've been working on for a very long time.
Yeah. We won't ever have the vehicle count on Summit that we have on 355. That, that's a given. But, it was interesting when we got into the demographics, how there were people around the table that simply would not believe that Old Town had changed that much.
Just, Ryan, to your point, if I could just add here, I think that also helped the committee understand not so much what it can't be, but more what it will be, which is probably more a destination for the, the independent retailer. And frankly, this is the strongest portion of the city where that segment of the market seems to be flourishing, as Sharon said, experiential, particularly ethnic retail. This is becoming a cornerstone of, of the old stone economy, old stone, Old Town economy.
Well, can you, I mean, just maybe for the benefit, not only of us, but the public, just elaborate a little bit on what we mean when we say independent experiential retail? I mean, are we talking about ethnic grocery stores? Are we talking about restaurants? What is independent experiential retail exactly?
Let's use La Casita as, as the most recent example of the third location of a restaurant that has reviews through the roof regularly in The Washington Post. It's a known entity. They, they did not choose Old Town by accident. And this is the type of restaurateur that will likely seek, other restaurateurs like La Casita will be seeking locations in Old Town where incomes are rising, diversity is key, and space is frankly more affordable than it is elsewhere in the city.
People are looking for something to consume, something that entertains them. Sure, grocery isn't something everybody needs, but as far as what will draw people, it's going to be, "Where will I go to spend my Saturday night?" And it's a wonderful neighborhood for an independent business. It's not necessarily a franchise. Franchises are locally owned. But, but these are typically startup entrepreneurs or expanding entrepreneurs, such as the Arbeza family. And where else could they buy a building in an urban area in Montgomery County?
Well, introduce a new concept for them.
Yeah.
For their restaurant business, because it's completely different from the other two, the one in, the one in Germantown. completely different from the other two, the one in common and the one in Germany.
Neil?
So, I'm just curious, I've been looking at the ESRI website with the information on the two different categories. Actually, aside from income in common, they seem like two very different groups of people. You know, the, the Metro Renters are, are single, recent college grads, and the American Dreamers are typically family groups and things like that. Do they want the same things in terms of economic activity? Do they want the same kinds of restaurants and retail, or, you know, is there enough overlap where we, where it's all one big happy thing, or are we fragmenting the market?
And, and the corollary to that is, do the Metro Renters age into becoming American Dreamers? In their twenties, maybe they're Metro Renters, in their thirties and early forties, maybe they're American Dreamers. I don't know.
Yeah, I have a theory that the, the Metro Renters kind of spread into some of the other segments in ESRI. But I think income drives a lot of that. If your household income is X, then you can afford a restaurant that charges Y. Well, they have similar income levels. But, you know, what do they want? Many things in common, they want a safe neighborhood, you know?
Who doesn't want that?
Access to employment. Those are very common things.
Right. One group wants, one group seems to want single-family owner-occupied homes, and the other group wants to rent. And so do we have sufficient stock of both of those in that part of town?
I think we're probably closing in on a need for more ownership opportunity, but you can see that they do, probably are not a condo-type owner.
Right. More of a single-family or a townhome.
Or a townhome.
All right, well, that's good, good for us to know as we think about opportunities going forward. Thank you.
And I would also think that the, the renters, especially the ones that are in the newer developments, I don't know how much of a young vibe, you know, I know Growlers will get, you know, a younger crowd, and maybe La Casita is as well, but, you know, like to your point about the wine bars, that's not exactly the, the Old Town scene right now. But, you know, if, if we, it could be. If we, and if we are, you know, starting to attract more, you know, individuals who are, you know, maybe it's, you know, they've gotten their job downtown, and they're taking the mark, and really starting to, to have that space. You know, you all were talking about, you know, being bike-friendly or being pedestrian-friendly, you know? The more that that space can be, you know, pedestrian-friendly and have that kind of an urban vibe for those, for those single people that are living there, then they're going to spend more time in Old Town. They're not necessarily going to have to drive over to Crown or have to drive over to the Rio. Because, I mean, you know, where we live, we, we do that, but we do try to spend time in Old Town. We, you know, we enjoy the restaurants that are there, and we don't even necessarily fall into that one. I think we're in, in another demographic ourselves as a family. But there is some of that there, but I think there's certainly more opportunities for that particular demographic to have more opportunities to spend more time in Old Town.
So, were you done? Is there an opportunity for some art and entertainment venues in Old Town, given the, of an independent nature? Galleries, you know, a small playhouse, or even a music venue? You'd figure with Victor Litts there, and many musicians, professional and otherwise, coming through to Old Town, that there might be a possibility for something like that. You know, is there, have we promoted that aspect of it as a, as an area that would?
Sharon, I'd say it's come up several times.
Yeah, I, I am skeptical, only because so much is offered throughout the county, and production costs now make it difficult for, say, a dedicated music venue. It doesn't mean that there isn't an opportunity for the restaurants to be adding live entertainment, which is a much lower-risk, faster way to ramp up that kind of scene.
But the experiential shopping often involves, you know, independent artists and consignment places where art, work of different types is sold.
And it came, it came up when we were doing the Park Plaza Committee, and in fact, there was a commitment by Tony Litts, if we built performance space, he would get people out there. We'll have to remind him.
So, how did Hyattsville do it? They designated an arts district, and I guarantee you, when it was designated, it was not an arts district, and now it's built up with, they opened some galleries there, and they've got more townhomes there and everything. It seemed like they called it that, and then it became that, as opposed to it was that, and then they named it.
Well, they had a nice anchor with Franklin's, and they had some big storefronts that they could use, I think that they would adapt themselves to that, and then some decisions by some major restaurants to come in, Busboys and Poets.
They're very close to the University of Maryland.
Really close to the University of Maryland, and, and one, Route One is a heavily-traveled road, it's very different than East Diamond and Summit, so.
Franklin's was it for a long time, and it all blossomed from there.
We reviewed the arts district designation, we did it once for the Kettlin's area, and it simply didn't apply there, and.
Would be more appropriate, you know?
It would, but it didn't, I don't have all the criteria here, obviously, but even Old Town would have been challenging to get state designation for a variety of reasons.
Well, we don't really have the arts stuff going on, you need to have that. You have the affordable housing, which you didn't have in Kettlin's, but you don't have the arts venues here at this, at present.
Yeah, it's interesting how the criteria for the A and E District has changed over time. Now it's more or less looking for a concentration of arts entities before the designation, when maybe 15 years ago, it was viewed as, we'll use this to stimulate redevelopment, and it wasn't such a requirement to have an existing inventory. And that was our problem with Kettlin's, was to find that community that was already there. And then the state incentives, I haven't been wowed with what the designation gets.
Yeah, I think it has to be more organic than that. I mean, even look, so, I go back to San Diego, and everybody who's been to San Diego's been to the Gaslight District, but people don't realize that, many people don't realize the history of the Gaslight District was the Red Light District of San Diego for years. And the.
What exactly are you suggesting?
What I'm saying is that it was, it was a pretty rundown area, and the first, the first major restaurant chain to move in was Old Spaghetti Factory, and it was still pretty much that. And then, after that, were local artists, because they could afford to rent there, came there, and then, and then an art scene kind of developed, and, you know, the city made some major decisions about how to rehabilitate the area, but it kind of started with that. So, that's not the only example of a city that's done that in a, in a rundown urban area, but I don't think we have a rundown urban area. I think we have some great opportunities, though, and perhaps the rents might make that better, so, might make that more possible, so, anyway.
That's it. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment or ask a question on this topic? Not seeing any.
Any American Dreamers? Any Metro Renters?
Well done. Thank you all very much for this presentation.
Thank you.
Let's keep up the momentum with Old Town. Next, I'm going to invite Tony Sala to the table. We're going to have our annual briefing from the Economic and Business Development Committee, and Tom and Sharon will stay, stay right there.
We'll stay quite a little while longer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to serve yet again as the staff liaison to the Economic Business Development Committee. A couple of things were crossing my mind as I was coming in tonight. This is my fifth year of serving in this role, and I think aside from one, none of the original members, or the members whom I inherited as members of the Economic and Business Development Committee are, are there any longer, which either means they couldn't work with me any longer, or the committee did what it was really intended to do, which was to churn and continually bring on new blood and new ideas, and I think it's done that. I think it's more involved, I think it's more diverse than it's ever been, and frankly, I think it's, it's functioning in all cylinders, as well as it ever has. And it's also as relevant as it ever has. Each month, I think we bring new topics to them. This is a smart group who kind of become jack-of-all-trades when they enter the room. They all come from a diverse background in different industries, and they bring a unique perspective to, to a different topic. Tony Sala happens to be one of those bright guys, I don't like to say that in front of him, but he is, we're thrilled to have him, and he's here to tell you a little bit more about what we talked about over the last 12 months. Tony?
I'm going to repeat everything we've talked about over the last 12 months, verbatim.
Well, 90% of that was you, Tony, right?
Yes, that's why I asked to speak, so.
Sorry, I didn't get it.
I thought you were just going to repeat what Tom just said about you, Ryan.
Well, first of all, I set the expectation way high. I always like to aim low, and we go high. For those of you who I had the pleasure of meeting, Mayor, when you said my name, I'm pretty sure I sensed a collective sigh, and Ryan actually verbalized your concern. I want, I want this to be what I experience it to be, and that's communication between the business public and the municipality of Gaithersburg. And from somebody that's been lifelong and resident of Montgomery County, I, and I'm a businessman in Montgomery County, I think Gaithersburg is top-notch. And my initial entree into the committee was to kind of just see what's going on behind the curtains, and I've been very pleasantly surprised that there is as much impact from a committee as it relates to decision-making by the, the city. And I, I just was sitting here listening, and I don't want that to go unsaid, but that's really a boon for the city, that, just the, the culture of communication, because it doesn't happen in the rest of other surrounding areas that we may know that surround us.
You got you.
So, this has been a pleasure. So, let me get to, as, as Tom mentioned, we have a robust, I'll say, group of, of committee members, and for, for the council members that have been to our, our meetings, we don't just roll over on topics and just say, you know, what, what time is this over? We, we discuss them, and there's, there's a genuine interest, because of the chemistry of the group, with different business owners from different segments, and the willingness, again, it's not an effort in futility, to discuss something and then pass it along, and see that it actually was listened to, and I just want to underline that. But here's a list of our committee members, we have four new members this year, and there's a rigorous hazing program that we have, that if they survive that, we're, they're, they're one of us.
And Tony started that, didn't he? When you were with that committee, the hazing?
Oh, yeah, do you like it?
Yeah.
All right, please go on.
Please don't get me started. So, so these are pretty, this slide is pretty intuitive of what economic development is, and I, I think these go without saying, but until you kind of scratch the surface of these things, they're just words. And we actually focus on these on a macro and micro level that really, really is meaningful. I will say that Tom and Sharon are, are great at hubring tangents sometimes, which I'm on one now, and, and also bringing it back to these core issues, which, which is the whole reason we're here. So, obviously, we want to focus, as, as the presentation just before, on different areas of, of the city that can, can use some attention, and this is the first I'm hearing that Old Town is something that the city's interested in. This is a shock to me. So, I'm kidding, this is, this is really fun to work on, and I, I don't want to just ramble on, so I'm going to take us to the next slide, and let's get into some of our, our strengths. One that I mentioned was that there's a communication, a mutual communication platform that we can tap into the well-educated workforce. We're strategically located in an area that's used to, when I was growing up, not be desirable. This used to be farmland, now, this is, this is where things should converge. And a lot of that has to do with just access, we talked about Mark Train and bicycles, and it's no fault of, I mean, it's, it's no accident that the, the city also is very proactive in incentives and the flexibility with the zoning, as it relates to tax amendments and the like. There are challenges, I'm sorry, I am breaking the news right now. The office market is, has been abhorrent. It's, 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 it's been a challenge. My job is to lease empty buildings for landlords in Gaithersburg, and there were no good conversations when I saw that phone ringing for five years. And I, I had to answer. So, I'm very in tune with the soft office market, and there is, there is an uptick, there is hope. It's not going to be immediate, this is a aircraft carrier that will slowly turn around, but it's, it's there on the horizon. Lab space inventory has, has seen a higher demand and, and less supply, and there's a bunch of reasons for that, but we're well-positioned to take advantage of those opportunities as they come. The Frederick Gaver Duportor, and Old Town, those areas, as I think we've all been, I've heard you discuss, these are ripe for opportunities. They, and that's the fun part, we get to, we get to figure out what they want to be. Suburban Ibbic, I think Gaithersburg is, again, as I grew up, Gaithersburg is way out here. Now it's not. And so, we need to let people know that this is, this is, as Rockwell is called, North Bethesda. We're north-north Bethesda, meaning that we're close, and we're not as, John, I, I get you that that's, I'm probably not allowed to say that, but it's, it's just perception. We are an area that is viable. So, competing priorities, Tom, you know, I, I don't know specifically, I won't expand on that, but, you know, we want to keep a, a good chemistry of new and old, and that is critical, because you can build something, and if there's no substance behind it, people will go to the next one. So I think there needs to be a mixture of the two. So, one of our meetings, we had Bobby Cannon from Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation. I actually have a note, but I wasn't there that day, but I, I understand it was great. But, but as an example, here I am talking about the surrounding areas, it's, it's important to work with, with everyone, and again, I've found, so far, everyone I know, and sitting here and sitting there, to be very receptive. So, this is an example of that. We also, I wasn't at this meeting either. I was in hospital for a little while. So, Greg Mann came and spoke about a tax amendment for increasing, basically, FAR for some of the zone, the troubled zoning we have in Gaithersburg, and I'm very familiar with 700 Prince Orchard, which we'll get to in another slide, having listed and sold the piece of land next to it, which was kind of marketed altogether. And other than a penitentiary, which I thought that building should be, just the way it's designed, it's, it's really troublesome. But to have the, again, the flexibility from a tax amendment perspective of being able to adjust to the market, by increasing the FAR, you're creating, you're increasing the value of that property to make, to cast your net a little wider. So, I think that was one of the, one of the incentives, excuse me, the initiatives that, that we had some recommendations on, and, and again, they were listened to. Thank you. Watkinsville Interchange is, I think, when I first, now you're saying it's five years ago, the first talk to Tom, when he was newly on board, was, when is that interchange going to be built? And to his credit, I think, in the first week of office, he, he had an answer, because I'm assuming I wasn't the first one to ask. So, this is, this is a regular topic for us, and it's impactful to the city, and, and we care. We don't have to go over this building again, other than to say that I know that there was a lot of interest from a lot of different types of groups, and they all kind of were asking the same questions. How can we develop these into residential? And I, I think that there's a happy medium, and I think that. And I, I think that there's a happy medium and I think that, I think that's been overcome and I'm looking forward to, to good things for that site. The Fishman property has been talked about at length. I think, I think it's a pivotal piece of the puzzle to get things started that will then hopefully trigger Ryan, some of the Starbucks-type groups. They don't like to be pioneers, so we need to show them that this is not, excuse the term, a frontier. This is where they, they know what this is, because we're showing them this has what you're looking for. Mark Plaza, I think that's another, the fountain especially is my favorite. And actually, it actually, it's really great to have, I'm sorry, Tony, it's great to have this as a story to tell. At the end of the day, it's not, it's not, we're not building Taj Mahal, we're not, it's, it's building a, a picture of what this could be, but in the meantime, it's going to be nice and it's, it's proactive and it's, it's something that we need, but nobody, nobody, this is what the, the frontier, how that, the edges get softened with things like this. I don't even know what that is. Lake Forest Mall. So, Lake Forest Mall was another, was a topic that was, again, discussed robustly at more than one meeting, but Sharon put together a, a really comprehensive presentation on the players of the, the dynamic situation there and it's, it's of extreme interest to everybody that lives not only in Gaithersburg, but Montgomery County and, and I think expanding out concentrically from there, because there's so much potential. But I think there was a, a level of frustration at the end of it to say, well, we don't really have anything we can do until something happens. And that's not a fun place to be, but I think this slide just should say it is what it is for now. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I am sorry. Rob Robinson spoke to us about the Johnson family annexation and we had, we had a mixed, again, we, we discussed it and one of the things that came up was how it's going to impact traffic and bicycle access, I believe, was one of the things that was brought up. And, you know, we, we want to know more about that, but overall, we think it's, it's, it only benefits the city. We had Representative Nist visit, I think I did offend him when I asked what kind of shenanigans they're up to back there on the campus, that my cellphone drops on 270 every time we drive by. But it was actually a really interesting conversation because they're, just look at a map of Gaithersburg, they are, what is that? And that's, that's what we want people to ask and we want to be able to tell them. This is, this is a workforce, this is viable and, and they'll, we can, we can help each other, so that was the purpose of that meeting. This was one of our most recent meetings and I think it was just touched upon a little bit earlier, is the automotive use in Old Town and just what that means from reflex, meaning we don't want automotive uses, to is there a market for it, to what do we, what are we really asking for here? And that's just more flexibility. So, we, we, we are in favor of that. So, just looking ahead to 2017, we're, a lot of these are familiar. Website maintenance and improvements, I, I will say, and I was not scripted to say this, or any of this, of, it's a, professionally, it's of great importance to me to have a, a municipality with a website that's easy to maneuver, navigate and has all the information I need from zoning to regulations to an overview of synergistic services. And I, I have to say that, I won't mention what it is, but there's another county within 50 miles up here that I, I think is, I've always said is the best. I think Gaithersburg is a rival as it relates to comparison, really intuitive, really great for business and in addition to what it's, what it helps with the citizens. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work and along with your fellow members of the committee. Questions, comments?
I just want to make a quick comment and thank Tony. As the council liaison, I go to all these meetings and everyone who attends these meetings attributes mightily to the meetings, but Tony, by far, the most mightily. And we really appreciate it because it shows how seriously you take this committee and its work and wanting to contribute to the greater good of the city and its, and its economic standing. So, thanks to you, thanks for the good presentation, look forward to continuing to work with the committee.
Thank you, I, I agree.
Any other?
Yeah, I just wanted to, and I guess this will be directed towards Ryan and Tom as well, is I've been kind of kicking around an idea about providing more support to local organizations who want to hold events that, to attract folks to our various business centers here in Gaithersburg. And I've been talking to folks on the council, I've been meeting with folks on staff about that. It, it sounds like something that, that would be up the alley of this committee and I'd be happy to come down and, and talk to you guys about what I'm thinking about here. Tom already knows what I'm thinking about, because I already talked to him about it. Is that something that's appropriate or how does that? Asking Ryan because he is the committee liaison.
I don't control the committee, I'm just the liaison.
Well, what specifically is, are you talking about?
Okay, so, what I've been talking about with folks and collecting information on is there are activities and events that occur around the city, such as Kentland's Day, I know Crown has Taste of Crown. And what I was originally talking about is, is finding out ways we could support these events, perhaps in exchange for sponsorship credit, but more so to show that we are being friendly to our larger business community here in Gaithersburg. We're not just focusing on incentives to bring employers to town, we're also saying to our retailers that are here, hey, we're here to support you. So, for example, Kentland's Day is really where this came up. And so, the, the local organization there throws the Kentland's Day event and in the past, the city has supported that event and has recently declined to provide any more support for that event. I, I've been kind of on the side of, we should be continuing some sort of support to that event and just trying to work out the formula of what kind of support that is. And I've been thinking of things such as waiver of event fees, providing logistical support to the events. And then that thought process dovetailed into a more of a, well, what else do we have here in the city that we provide support to or could provide support to, such as Taste of Crown? We are members of the GGCC, I know that comes through Tony's office, but how is that decision made? How do we make decisions to support the CCA-CC, who holds the Lunar New Year event at Lake Forest Mall? There's other events that we hold around town and it appears to me that it's more done so at a different apartment, departments at an ad hoc basis and I've been looking more toward formalizing that process, defining that process and ultimately, you know, supporting our business community and other segments of our population as, as we can. And I think at least that economic aspect of it would fall squarely into something that this committee might be interested in, because it, it ultimately, the genesis of it was a, formulating a proposal to support, encourage, develop, show that we're behind our business community.
So, let me, let me just speak to a couple of the things you just brought up, Rob. We did, used to be a partner on Kentland's Day, but our, we didn't just remove support from, from that event, we, what we did was we, we, we took a look at our policy because sort of some of the, some of our commitments to events in the community, both by nonprofit organizations and by for-profit organizations was sort of, it was getting out of hand, we wanted to formalize what our policy was going to be. And so, when we did, we, we made a distinction between community events and events that, that were commercial events. And Kentland's Day fell under the latter category and so, we looked at it differently from how we were, were looking at it previously. If you, I, I would suggest that if the Economic Development Committee were going to look at things like that, that the consideration would be sort of bang for our buck. If we're going to spend, you know, X number of thousands of dollars to support events, what is it, what ultimately will be the economic development benefit to the city? And so, if, if you guys are interested in considering that, that, from that perspective, that would be fine, but you know, I, I think it's probably more appropriate to start here and see if the council members are, are on board with that notion.
Well, I, I did have a discussion with Rob a little earlier, a week or two ago, where he had suggested sort of a loose outline of what he's proposing tonight and I'm, I'm certainly willing to hear out, you know, a, a more fleshed-out proposal or sort of coherent detailed proposal, but you know, I made no secret of the fact that I'm a little skeptical of the idea, first because we can't be everything to everyone as much as we'd like to be. And we did already kind of vet out this idea some years ago, before Neil and Rob were on the council and have a discussion about what should be the role of the city in supporting private community events. And, you know, we have to be careful when we think about setting precedent, because how do we distinguish between, you know, one business community event, another business community event? And, you know, Rob talked about things like Lunar New Year or GGCC, the, the Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber of Commerce. My personal feeling is that our involvement with some of those events is sort of fundamentally different than a kind of, you know, community sort of business fair type event. But, you know, we can talk about the, the comparisons and the differences, I think, between some of the events that we do help to support and some of the events that we, that we currently don't. And I do think, you know, in many ways, we already do show that we're behind the business community and I think that's really what this presentation is about and what we're talking about tonight. And at the same time, you know, we have events that are city events, that we sort of own and operate, like Oktoberfest, for example, where that's a city event, we own it. And in recent years, we have intentionally expanded it to include Main Street and to try and allow our local businesses to take advantage of a, a big city-programmed event, city-run event. So, I think at the same time that we're doing that, we need to balance against not trying to sponsor everything out there. And we're also, in our special events programming, moving more towards having sort of one signature event per season, which we've been talking about as a council, which I, I think most of us agree kind of makes sense, at least from a philosophical level, as we, as we move in that direction. And I agree with Judd that we really need to be thinking about how to leverage the bang for the buck. I mean, the difference between the Toolbox Grant and the Opportunities Grant and, and some of these, you know, sponsorship of programs is that those grants that we have in place, those are capital investments. Those are investments in real estate, investments in fixing up and fitting out property and it's going to be a long-term capital investment leveraged against private investment, which has a long-term impact on things like property values and job creation. And so, I'm not, you know, I wouldn't completely close the door to what I, what I think Rob is suggesting, but I think we need to think carefully about what is the biggest bang for the buck in terms of economic development, while recognizing that we cannot be all things to all people and that some of the things that we do support programmatically are somewhat different. And maybe staff can talk a little bit about, if, if we do want to get into this conversation tonight or some other night, you know, some of the things that we do now, GGCC, other things, how they're sort of somewhat different and how the cost-benefit analysis might be a little different from supporting private community business-type fairs. So, again, I'm willing to hear out a more fleshed-out proposal. I told Rob that I'm committed to doing that and I, and I will, but I still remain somewhat skeptical.
Neil?
Just wondering if this is the appropriate time to be having this discussion in front, you know, we're kind of derailing this committee presentation?
It, it, it's a fair point, I think, but Rob did relate it to the Economic Development Committee's presentation. Tom, Tom, we'll get to you in a sec, Mike. Did you, you looked like you wanted to say something or no? No.
You're not required, Tom.
No, I would, I would just say that I think the committee would be willing to discuss anything that's requested of it. Tony, you could speak about this, because the, the origins of the Toolbox Program really started in part with the committee and the, the spirit of the Toolbox was originated with this committee and they determined certain priorities that this money would be invested towards, as Job, as Ryan indicated, job creation, tenant improvement, investments, reinvestment in Old Town. Through the years, there has been some editing to that. I have worked to, Rob, to enhance the investment by the Toolbox Program into retail, a little bit more than had been going on with Tony. It had always been there in Old Town, we've ramped it up over the last few years in Old Town, we did extend it to certain uses along Main Street to discourage less service-oriented businesses and more destination-like, like retail, restaurants. So, I, I would say that as the Toolbox Program has changed, it has always been vetted through this committee. So, if you're proposing something like that explicitly regarding Toolbox, this is probably not a bad place to do it, but my impression to date is that they do like to see some sort of nexus with reinvestment in space, with retail, with jobs, with something like that, that's just staff members' perspective.
Mike, can you? Oh, go ahead.
Mike, go first. I just want to clarify, I'm, I'm not sure I'm hearing that this would necessarily be a Toolbox Grant, it could be just funding, I mean, there's a contributions budget within Economic Development, I think it's $7,500 this year. And it, just to contrast, for example, the Chamber of Commerce contributions, which tend to be sponsorships, I mean, the city's been a member for 70-some years and, you know, originally, membership in the Chamber of Commerce was our support of the business community for a long time, as a matter of fact. And even today, I don't, I don't think you could overestimate, you couldn't underestimate the, the utility of the chamber in advocating now for things like transportation improvements, Watkinsville interchange and, you know, our sponsorship of our events is a really very cost-effective way of, of getting that extra advocacy. So, it's, it's evolved, but it, it's, I, I hear Rob proposing kind of a third type of thing, that's not a Toolbox tangible real estate play like Ryan described, or, or a Chamber of Commerce advocacy thing is a different thing, which I think could be a pretty interesting discussion at the committee level.
Yeah, okay. Mike?
Yeah, well, I'm actually with Neil, I don't think it's a, this is the time to discuss it during the Economic Development Committee report. You know, there's certainly a history that goes to how the fee was created and why we made decisions not to directly support in-kind, within-kind support for business promotion events, other than our major events that we do. It's a, this become, I think it, it could become a slippery slope. Not all of these promotional events are created equal, some of them are, have very little cost to us and the benefits, you know, are what they are, others are considerable cost to us and the benefits are questionable, so, or maybe they're not, maybe we need to do that analysis, but I don't think, I don't think this is the time to be talking about it. I just wanted to thank Tony for the excellent report and the, the humor to go with it. I wish I could be there during some of those discussions, but I like the, I like the list of priorities that you're working on, that the committee will be addressing in, in 2017 and I think that, you know, probably one of the most important ones is, is that last bullet, is to how, one way to be sustainable is to make sure we're diverse, so that if, if one part of the, of the local economy starts to have problems, the, the rest of the... economy starts to have problems, that the rest of the, uh, the rest of the local economy isn't entirely dependent on that. And I think, you know, there's, uh, there's strength in diversity, and, um, uh, there's a sustainability that's related to that. So I think that the idea of how we can look to, you know, uh, we're in a biotech corridor, but if biotech goes south, which can happen, it happened not that long ago, uh, if all of our energy is focused on creating lab space and there's no more use for, and lab space is being abandoned, then, then we've got a problem. It's, I think we have a problem throughout the county and throughout the region with Class A office space. The occupancy rates are going down, and, you know, because of different policies and, and practices, uh, by those businesses. So, they, they would use that space normally. So, those are the kind of-
Functions of the market and-
Functions of the market and everything else. So I think that, but looking at how we can diversify our, our local economy is gonna be pretty important. Um, you know, the, the whole concept of, of, uh, commercial retail brick and mortar has changed because of the internet. So I don't, I don't think we can continue to look at how we invest in, we have to really look to local, local businesses, uh, sole proprietor kind of thing, to, to, uh, to create some of our markets. So, and, uh, to bring in some of that. So, anyway, uh, thank you for that report. I didn't have any particular question. I just wanted to change the subject back to why you were here.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could just circle back to finish up on my comment. I mean, I, I do see the nexus between the two. You know, my colleagues do not see it. Um, I, I propose it as kind of a way going forward. And it's a way we treated other presentations, including the Transportation Committee tonight, where we talked about what's happened, but also how to utilize the committee going forward and ideas going forward. And so what I'd like to do, um, 'cause what I am proposing is not quite what Ryan related, not quite what Tom had related. It was something that I've been discussing. I don't know where this should go, but I know I'm not a businessman. I know I'm not part of the business community. I've talked to folks in the business community. And what I'd like to do is leverage the expertise on this committee, if you're willing to have me to come down and just talk about my thoughts about, um, which way we're going. And I, I appreciate where Judd was going with this, is, is, he doesn't want this, the committee to spin its wheels, um, on an idea to support the business community when, uh, some colleagues on the council aren't keen on that idea.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
That's ridiculous.
On this idea that I'm talking about. That's what I meant to say.
Where the hell are you coming from sometimes, Rob?
I promise this won't be long. I think there's an interesting conversation we had between the Toolbox, which attracts business, and then incentives to keep businesses. And that's something, in this last downturn of the market, the landlords that survived were the ones that realized they had to do whatever it took to keep their tenants or their businesses. The ones that said, wow, I'll just, I'm not, that's ridiculous. I'm not doing that. They gave those buildings back to the bank in, more often than not. So, not to get specific, I know this isn't the format, forum for this, but I think the conversation about initiatives for, the Toolbox is fantastic, but is there a way to touch the business owners on a regular basis that's cost-effective? You do get bang for your buck through even just gestures from the city. And it's a branding for the city, and it's an outreach to the local businesses. And it doesn't have to be anything that's, uh, laborious. It's just, uh, recognizing and, and as Sharon goes around to businesses and talking to them. That's really what I think the strength of Gaithersburg is, and it just, it can be formalized a little bit better. And that's it.
Rob, in answer to your question, we'd be happy to host you at, um, a meeting in 2017. Um, related directly or indirectly, depending on how you look at it, we will also be doing a session on business improvement district legislation. I just think that a lot of this tends to fall under things that, um, business improvement district organizations would be addressing. This is why they're formed. Um, Maryland always had a high bar for establishing bids. I don't remember what it was before Sharon. I think it was north of eighty percent of commercial property owners needed to be in agreement in order to create one. I don't know if you or the public are familiar with these entities. I used to run them in New Jersey, but it's effectively where commercial property owners agree to assess themselves marginally a little bit more and collect a pool of money, and that money goes back to them, and they can spend it however they like, from marketing, advertising, landscaping, security, whatever the business community's priorities might be. And I think there has been growing pressure in Maryland to permit communities and counties to create these for very specific locations, so that these business areas can use money like this to do some of the things you're talking about. I'm not suggesting that's the solution for everything you're talking about, but I think this conversation, coupled with yours, could show the local retail community that we, we hear they've got ideas, they've got concerns, and there are perhaps a few ways that we could help them out.
Yeah, if, if you'll pencil me in, I'm happy to come down. And as it kind of rings in my head about what I just said, it, it was not what I intended to say, that this council does-
I was not intended. Yeah, I, I knew what you meant.
Uh, Tom, follow-up to that. I don't know how much you know about the Bethesda Urban Partnership. Are they a bid under state law? I only say, I only ask because I know, they, they strike me as an example of what you're talking about.
Yeah. They, they effectively are, but they're a little bit district, uh, different, because they, like Silver Spring, are funded almost entirely through parking revenue. Um, the parking decks in Silver Spring and the parking decks in Bethesda fund to the tune of a million dollars or more annually their budgets. In fact, I think it's closer to four million in, in Bethesda, um, where when they built these decks, they agreed to dedicate, um, quite a bit of the revenue that comes from those decks to these organizations that are governed by Board of Directors. They're quasi-public-private, but the distinction is that they do have this dedicated funding source through the parking revenue. So, as opposed to an additional assessment levied on a commercial owner, they get their money through this deck. So, I, I guess that's good on the one hand. On the other hand, Sharon and I are seeing evidence that the county is starting to divert some of that money away from the urban districts and back into the, um, the, the county coffers, uh, as needed. So, uh, when, when you have the revenue coming directly from the commercial properties, they, they can't do that. Um, but they are effectively bids, just with a little bit of a different funding mechanism. Great.
So I have a question for you, a forward-looking question. Um, what do you see as the important topics for the committee going forward into next year? Is it the shrink, the, the lack of, uh, lab space going forward? Is it, like Forest Mall? I mean, is there a list of things that you really want to address with this committee going forward?
As the mayor's here, it's the mall. It's just the mall. We may only talk about-
The last, the last slide makeover.
The mall is certainly a priority for the committee. The, the, um, this relatively new problem of running out of lab spaces, um, is gonna be, continue to be addressed by the committee.
We do think there are, will probably be some sub-lab opportunities, uh, in the wet lab space.
Yeah. I think the state's, uh, retooling of the Enterprise Zone Program is going to become a topic of conversation. Um, we believe that the state will do away with the Enterprise Zone Program as we know it. Not we, Gaithersburg, we, Maryland. They will come up with some new program that I'm sure will be discussed by the committee. Sharon, any other thoughts?
Oh, that, the reformatting of the Maryland incentives is definitely something that we'll want to keep our eye on. And I think that a proposal will be introduced to the General Assembly, and that'll be something that'll need committee input. And it always seems that every few months, there's either a text amendment or a rezoning of some sort, and planning will come to us, uh, for the business input. And we always have very, uh, lively conversations over topics like that. And what I like about this committee, because it's made up of people with commercial real estate, some people with engineering backgrounds, uh, some with science, some people from federal, uh, agencies, there will be opinions expressed that are complete surprises to me and extremely valid. And after, you know, a few decades in the business, that, that doesn't always happen. But with this group, ooh, every time they meet, it happens.
Is there, is, is there anyone from the public who has been, and I'm looking at the public and I see two. Do either of you gentlemen have any comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any. Uh, we thank you all. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
I believe Tom and Sharon are staying for the next presentation.
I have to leave?
No, of course, they're here.
I'm kidding. I meant to say, I have to leave.
So next, presentation on economic development incentive programs.
Thank you again for the third time, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're back. This is our annual briefing to you and the public on the incentive programs, as you know. This city funds and maintains a couple of very important, um, economic development programs that have proven critical through the years. And, uh, we're here to tell you what we've done over the last twelve months. Little background, as you know, the Toolbox Program is designed to provide diversified economic development incentives that can be applied, applied to existing businesses and commercial buildings around the city. And of course, it consists of one-to-one matching grants directed toward businesses that exhibit growth potential and provide stable, well-paying jobs, message being it's not industry-specific. Matching grants go towards what we call TI or Tenant Fit-Up, basically reinvestment in space, job training, commercial signage, uh, demolition, ADA upgrades, utility upgrades. We've recently added storefront and landscaping here in Old Town, and of course, if it's not on the list, we'll consider a custom grant. Last year, we've made some changes. After six years, the Toolbox Program demonstrated success, and it further distinguished the city from competing locations. We had assessed applications and awards to date, gave us some insight in what the market was really looking for. We proposed some amendments, and those were ultimately implemented in 2016. The committee also vetted those changes as well before we brought them to you. And just to quickly, uh, breeze through those changes that were made previously, you could get fifty thousand dollars over the life of the program for any given business. It's still fifty thousand dollars, but we may consider a second tranche of funding after five years to support extensions, meaning that when the lease expires and they need more money, 'cause they want to reinvest in the space, we want to be open to that request.
In other, in other words, you know, if you got a five thousand dollar grant the first time around, you could go back and get another five thousand or ten thousand grand, you know, five years later? As long as it, as long as you, you met all the requirements and it was at least five years since your initial one?
Uh, well, if, if it were five thousand, you could come back after ten years. Meaning, originally, it just meant that over the life of the program, you were only entitled or could receive up to fifty thousand dollars through the Toolbox Program. This is saying that if you applied for and got fifty thousand dollars this year as a business coming into the city and making the investment, after five years, if that same business was going to grow, lease more space, and came seeking money above the fifty thousand dollar cap, we would consider that request for certain businesses. Uh, the TI grant, uh, that didn't change. Still, we require a five-year lease or later. Uh, previously, we sought two years of vacant space now, one year simply because downtime between tenants is rarely less than two years, and change avoids the needs to make an exception for rare occurrences. Uh, previous category grant for TI was twenty-five thousand dollars. Standard grant was two dollars a square foot. We gave up to three bucks a foot for the Old Town or BioSpace. How did we change it? We increased it to four dollars a square foot for space in Old Town, for biotechnology and lab space, which is typically more expensive, and facilities older than twenty-five years. There was just a recognition that the, that the same applied for whether or not you were making investment in ninety-seven, eleven Washingtonian Rita building that's less than ten years old, or buildings that have been around for thirty or forty years. And we thought landlords for space that's getting up there in age could perhaps, uh, better leverage, uh, a little bit more money. The increase reflects higher capital investment typically required for these targeted industries. There's greater costs associated with renovation of older properties, and of course, we want to incent tenants to consider Old Town and Three Fifty-Five. Demo assistance, uh, previously, you get twenty-five thousand. That was increased to thirty-five thousand, just out of recognition that there's higher demolition costs inherent in renovation of older properties. ADA upgrades was bumped from ten to twenty thousand. Uh, the category maximum has not increased. All the costs have. Previous category maximum for the utility upgrades was ten thousand. We've increased it to twenty, and we remove the restriction from Old Town, recognizing there are these kind of investments that are necessary in properties throughout the city. This encourages capital investment in systems that otherwise contribute to obsolescence and promotes energy efficiency and sustainability. Commercial signage, the grant remained at a ten thousand dollar cap. We did expand into Three Fifty-Five into Old Town. Uh, we eliminated multi-tenant requirement in these two targeted areas. And, um, what we want to do is promote the improvement of the appearance of older commercial areas. And we did add one new one. And we did account one application for this this year. It's limited to Old Town, but we would certainly want to make it look a little nicer. Up to ten thousand dollars for storefront and landscaping improvements to address deteriorating facades and general aesthetics of the CBD.
Who was it?
What's that?
Who was the applicant?
The funeral home. We'll get to that.
So, but we've approached all of the businesses to let them know that this is available.
We have informed the Old Town businesses that this is available, and no sooner did Tibidale come forward to say we were moving it.
Well, they were doing a renovation anyway, so it seemed to come-
Well, when they implied they weren't, right? They had not yet started that. We'll get to them.
Yeah.
Spectrum Technology was, uh, Tony, there were sixteen South Summit, which is now, which is now our building. So we had a couple of companies that were being displaced. The city's acquisition of sixteen South Summit for future police use. We certainly wanted to keep those companies that were being displaced, and we did re- award a grant for a little over seventeen thousand to assist with improving twenty-six hundred square feet of newly leased space just across the street at twelve South Summit. They used the tenant fit-up. If you don't mind, I'll just refer to that as TI, uh, interior demolition and utility upgrades. And they invested a little over a hundred thousand into the job. Uh, they're moved in, and they've got about twenty-seven people working there. There it is. Tibidale was awarded five thousand dollars to support costs associated with new signage and landscape enhancements at one-twenty-four East Diamond. Uh, categories were commercial signage and storefronts, and they're investing ten thousand dollars, and they employ five people here in Old Town. Zero-K NanoCheck, we love this company. Not that we don't love all of our companies, but this one was particularly of interest, because this is, to our knowledge, the first, uh, spinoff out of the NIST campus. We had a couple of really smart guys go off on their own. Uh, they leased about thirty-seven hundred square feet of space at four oh one Professional Drive. So they're smart. They came from NIST and they went to Professional Drive. It was the trifecta for us. And they, they got about twenty-three thousand. The categories were TI, utility, and interior demo, and they put in about a hundred sixteen thousand into the job. Hsu was a nice get for us. This was a construction company that relocated their headquarters from Rockville to a, uh, former adult video store. To hear them tell that they still occasionally have the clientele come, misunderstanding that they're no longer there. We really do hear that. So they may want to come for another grant for better signage. Were, they were awarded two grants. They got fifty thousand dollars. They did a full renovation. Sharon and I did a walkthrough. They, they really gutted the place. Um, they put in over three hundred fifty thousand dollars. They took advantage of just about all the categories available to them. They brought sixty jobs with them to five oh seven North Frederick. This was a nice get for us. Arc Document Solutions, Tony, that was another sixteen South Summit.
Yes.
Tenant that we wanted to keep here in town. They left, uh, the space across the street, moved almost four thousand square feet of new office and production space at eight oh four West Diamond over by-
South Bureau?
Yep, over by Dogfish. Uh, they used the TI money. They put in about thirty thousand dollars, and, um, we're happy to keep them here in town. They employ four people. Power Consulting Group, um, good company. Uh, I always like to highlight the, the property, office properties around Lake Forest Mall. Um, several of those owners have been pretty diligent about reinvesting in those buildings. For a long time, they struggled, uh, double-digit vacancy rates, um, kind of, uh, left for dead. And, and rather than give up on them, this is one of those owners that has been actively recruiting new and good companies for the space, and they've also learned how to leverage the city's program to help with the investment necessary to get these tenants. Power was one of these companies. They took about thirty-six hundred feet at seven oh two Russell. Uh, they put in about fifty-two thousand dollars into the space, and they employ thirteen people. Invitro Science, um, another one of our lab companies that took quite a bit of space, uh, almost nine thousand square feet of office and lab at thirty West Watkins. West Watkins Mill wrote another one of these great success stories, not just 'cause Rob Wu lives up in there, of course, but because, uh, this is space that, uh, for long, had double-digit vacancies as well. Now there is effectively zero vacancy, uh, over there. I'm not saying we're entirely responsible for it, but we have certainly been behind- I'm not saying we're entirely responsible for it, but we have certainly been behind a lot of the investment that's occurred over there over the last few years. This was a big investment. They put in over $420,000, brought 31 jobs. It's complete, they're moved in. EcoDomo, interesting company. Sharon, you want to tell them a little bit about EcoDomo? I love this company.
They're a leather recycling company. So they take leather products, reprocess it, and create flooring, countertops, other products, wall surfaces. They're used in Starbucks and in hotel lobbies. They'll be moving into space, so they've been awarded a grant of just under $30,000. I guess $30,000 is the award.
When I went to the Bio Convention in San Francisco, and I stayed in a Marriott downtown, EcoDomo had furnished.
Cool.
The rooms in the Marriott I was staying in. So they're known. 630 East Diamond Avenue, this is space over by Gerard Street, flex space that also had long been struggling with vacancy, not so much anymore. There's a little bit more over there, but a lot less than there was just a year ago. TI demo, ADA upgrades were all the categories for which they applied. The job is under construction, and they're bringing in about six of them with them. We all know about La Cita, so I won't dwell too much on it, but this is obviously a big win for, for Old Town. It's about 3,100 square feet. They've put in conservatively a quarter million dollars. They brought about 20 jobs, it's complete, and by most measures seems to be a big success. Financial Training Incorporated, or FTI, we gave them a grant for about $7,000 to assist with costs associated with renovating 3,500 feet at 9801 Washingtonian Boulevard. This is, of course, a Dexos building, and this building is now entirely leased. This one was a gamble, but frankly, not much of a gamble. Typically, we award Toolbox Grants to companies that lease space. We don't typically provide awards to landlords with the hope that they will land a tenant. This one was a little different. We decided to pursue it because this owner, Tri-Tower Financial, they're a Boston-based investment firm. This was their first acquisition in Montgomery County. They had about 6,200 square feet of obsolete flex space, and they approached the city and said, you know, what's going to work here? And we told them about the problem of the lab market here and how frankly, we're running out of space. We knew, but they reminded us just how much retrofitting this, this job would, retrofitting this space would be, how much it would cost. So we committed to them $50,000, the Toolbox maximum, to retrofit this space into new office and lab space. They put in almost three-quarters of a million dollars into it, and we are happy to say that there is a lease signed for a Chinese biotech company that is, wishes they got more money for it. They will not. But we were, we were confident that this would convert itself into jobs, and it has done so.
Do we have any details yet on, on the company or the number of jobs or anything like that? That's, that's still coming.
We've met with them and toured the space with them.
Put our commercial permitting staff in about two weeks ago. I won't say the name of the company, I'll just say that they are bringing front, it was about 10 jobs, is my recollection.
That sounds about right for the size, please.
So this is a recap of the approved and pending grants for 2016. TI, of course, was the major category with over $137,000. ADA and utility upgrades, $80,000, interior demolition assistance, almost 50, commercial signage, 10, storefront and landscaping, 2,500, and we did one job training grant for 2,000. So many, if not all, of the categories for which we can award funds were, were leveraged this past year. We gave away more money than we have in the past, 280,000. Typically, it's somewhere around 200. Total private investment leverage was almost 2.6 million. We improved almost 53,000 feet with our money, and we created or supported about 174 jobs this past year. The Opportunities Fund, as you know, is established about six years ago to support unique business development opportunities and provide a ready pool of cash that can be drawn to help entice companies to or remain within the city of Gaithersburg. We did that a couple of times this past year. Launch Labs, you may recall, was a grant for $100,000 that we awarded to Alexandria Real Estate. We construct about 6,000 square feet of specialized, state-of-the-art lab and office space at 708 Quins Orchard Road. This, too, was obsolete office space. ARE among the premier life science landlords in the market. Saw the need, sought partners with Montgomery County, BHI, and ourselves to help accelerate early-stage life science companies. Launch Lab consists of five 1,200-square-foot rentable modules, as well as access to communal areas. And BHI provides critical startup and entrepreneur-in-residence programs to help these startup companies. And Sharon, my recollection is that all of these spaces have since been leased. All are spoken for. The other grant was to MRI Global. We awarded $85,000 to MRI, a contract research organization, to support TI costs associated with the company's relocation of its local research facility from Rockville to 65 West Watkins. MRI invested at least 3.6 million in approximately 43,000 square feet of office and lab space. They brought with them 55, FTE stands for Full-Time Equivalent Employees to 65 West Watkins Mill. They pledged to employ at least 60 by the end of next year, or 2018, rather. Investments to date, meaning over the life of the programs, the Toolbox, we've given almost a million dollars supporting little over 1,000 jobs, seven Opportunities Grant awards totaling almost 1.5 million, 1,730 jobs supported, and about a half million square feet of office and lab space.
And the life of the program's been, what, six years now?
Yes, 2010. More. I don't think so. I think it was 2010.
I think it was just, just.
Lunch in 2009. Well, no awards were given out until.
Right.
That's fair.
Well, we made the public announcement that we were making this investment in 2009. That was actually a pretty big.
It was when everything crashed, and that's when, and we as a mayor and council decided to double down on investment in economic opportunities for the city. And what?
Mr. Allen, I want to cut you off. I don't know if we have it on the screen, because there was one more slide. Councilmember Sesma, can you see it up there?
Yeah.
Okay. Had asked over the weekend if maybe we would maybe be able to map the grants awarded to date. And Sharon and, and Jan in our GIS department did a bang-up job today trying to get this done. We did map out Opportunities Grant and Toolbox Award to date, just so you can get a geographic depiction of where they've gone. This is, this is our first stab at it. You may recall the biotech story map that we've created that really, it's really kind of cool. We're going to do the same thing here, that, that breaks out the location and gives a little bit of a narrative for each grant awarded to date, private investment leverage, jobs created, et cetera. So this is, this was just for, this was just for tonight, but there's more to come.
And my, my point in my earlier question about the life of the grants was, you know, to look at these accomplishments in the last slide before the map, if that can, I don't know if we can put that back up.
This one?
Yeah.
No, I think it's a couple more.
Keep going.
The other way.
The other way.
Yeah, this one. So in looking at that, it's, it's an impressive series of accomplishments, but also to remind the public that this is accomplishments that have been spread out over five, six, seven years. So we are, we are being strategic in the way that we use these resources and leverage these resources, while at the same time creating long-term benefit in, in the way that real estate gets improved, and the way that jobs get created, and the way that we include guarantees with some of these grants that the number of jobs stays the same or even grows over time. So these are, these are impressive numbers, but I just want to put that in the context of, you know, this is a long-term, strategic, step-by-step process that I know you all have worked very hard on. And, you know, the numbers are very impressive, and they, they've been moving dramatically in the right direction. So, thank you.
Yeah, when I, you know, I think this and the map shows that we're making investments and companies or businesses are coming here to make investments throughout the city. It's not isolated to a single area, or focused in a single area, but, but there's opportunities throughout the city. So I think that's actually, it's helpful to see that. But there's certainly parts of the city where we could, hopefully, there'd be other opportunities as well. But I think that's a, that's a nice map.
Thank you.
To show that.
Agreed.
And, you know, what, what Ryan said. But yeah, our investment, you know, we stuck our neck out early. I think we got a lot of attention. People kept coming up to us at MML and outside, and the National League of Cities asked how we did that. You know, we just explained, Henry and I would explain, you know, we want to put a stake in the ground, make sure people noticed this. And we got a lot of notice for that. And fortunately, we have the staff to be able to put that to good use and make that investment and, you know, show that this is, that Gaithersburg is open for business. And, you know, I think this just exemplifies that.
Well, it's, we think it's proven successful, and you've certainly made us the envy of our colleagues, have support and resources to, to work with companies as, as they're coming in.
It's good to hear. Specifically, though, you guys should be commended because of, because really, I mean, we have, we have these programs and we have these resources that we've allocated, but the, but you guys have really done a good job vetting the companies and finding the opportunities and rating the opportunities. And I know how much work goes into recommendations before they make it here to us, and we appreciate it. So, and clearly, it's, you know, the numbers are bearing that out.
I particularly want to thank Sharon, who is constantly right behind me, rolling her eyes. No.
Yeah.
She just did.
But, but also to our, our city manager, who obviously got this program started.
Yeah.
Before I got here, and I've been able to run with it for many years, but the genesis really lies with he and with the electeds that had the foresight to do this. So I appreciate the credit, but much of it lies elsewhere.
Yeah. And I mean to include Tony in that, too, because I know Tony's got a lot to do with how we move forward on these programs. Anyone else before we? Go ahead.
I'd just like to say that, you know, I've been observing this process for several years since, since before I was elected and you kicked me off of the committee.
Yeah.
The, you know, it's one thing, it's nice that you give credit to the fact that there's a program and there's money in it that makes you the envy of your colleagues, but it's a very well-made program. You know, you've added 2,700 jobs to this city of 67,000 people. I mean, that's a very significant percentage of our job base at this point in, you know, in a time, in times when the economy was in questionable shape. So I think it, it represents very good work. And I know from having many conversations with you folks over the last several years, how hard you work to vet these opportunities, how when people approach me and I come to you with them, and then you both roll your eyes. You know, you're really picking and choosing the, the opportunities that are, are real and have, you know, your judgment is, is much appreciated.
Thank you.
I see the same two members of the public. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add to that? No? Okay. Well, thank you all very much. Thanks for all you do. Do we have anything from any staff? Okay, not seeing anything, then. The next regular meeting of the mayor and council is next Monday, December 5. Until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.